I'll take the order and start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local. Mary Jo Rasmussen.
Here.
Mary Jo Rasmussen.
Here.
Teddy Jacobson.
Here.
Troy Webb.
Here.
Amy Huffman. Anne Deemer. I'm sorry, just one moment. Amy Huffman is here on the screen. She is muted right now.
And Scott.
And Scott is also here, yes.
And Anne Deemer.
Okay.
Here.
Thank you. Yeah, just note that they are joined on Zoom. And has the meeting been notified to the public according to open meeting laws?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I have just a motion to make a schedule change here. I motion to make some adjustments, move 9.3 to number one, 7.3 to number two, 6.2 moved to seven o'clock. That's when Ellen Molenhauer can join us. And then add 8.2, an item for discussion.
So I would like to add, with the board's permission, 8.2, a conversation, no action, on high school credit graduation requirements. So just for discussion this evening, a new item, 8.2, high school graduation credit discussion. And if I could just explain to everybody what we have going on technology-wise, so everyone understands where we are. I have the full admin team on Zoom, so that they can answer any questions that you have, so it is as if they are in the room. I also had the other two board members that are on Zoom. At any point, they can unmute themselves and everyone will be able to hear them through here. Anybody who, I don't know if you have any videos tonight, that would still come through the other sound system. But Stephanie will be monitoring the chat on the Zoom meeting. Our hope is to get maximum participation, while whether they are gathered here physically or not. So just so everyone understands. You have questions for the rest of the admin team, they're few. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second to make the adjustments in the schedule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, with that, we have no public comment that has been requested. We'll move to 9.3, and we have Brian Brewer here as our guest to talk.
Thanks for joining us, Brian.
Charlie, I have a question.
Sure thing.
So before the whole thing started, we approved doing board meetings through Zoom and being able to vote. I went into this as, we're not voting, if we're on Zoom, whatever, or is that something else?
I believe our last policy discussion was that there was participation by Zoom, but not voting, was my last recollection. While we're sitting here and Brian is talking, I'll go back and do that digging, but I believe it was not voting electronically.
And I assumed that, but I didn't ever remember having a specific discussion on when we were suspending that.
Sure.
And going back to the typical.
If any. Sure, if any board member wanted to suspend that rule, you certainly have the ability to do that at any time. That just is a motion by a member, so obviously not the two that are virtual, because right now. So is there somebody in the room that would like to make that motion to suspend the rule, so that the virtual participants can actively vote this evening?
I would move to suspend the rule.
For this evening or for until?
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up, Amy. So there's a motion.
Is there a second?
No second.
How about any discussion or opinions on that? A motion has been made and seconded to allow voting for tonight's meeting by virtual for Scott and Amy's participation. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Thanks for bringing that up, Amy, and the two of you are now welcome to aye and nay as the evening goes on, okay?
Thank you.
Not good, Brian.
Okay, Brian.
Okay.
It actually picks up on the camera, even though it doesn't really amplify even the room.
Okay, sounds good. I'll project my voice as well. Good to see everyone. Congratulations on the successful referendum. Now the fun part starts. We get to implement the plan and, you know, lock in the financing significantly lower than the conservative planning that you utilize during the referendum. So that's really what I'm here tonight to do, is to discuss the planning that Jill and I worked through over the last week, post-election, updating the planning, looking at the best way to utilize the funds that you've been levying to prepay debt. And along with the low interest rate environment, there's an opportunity to refinance some of your prior debt to further lower that cost of funding, which, as you may recall, you came in significantly under your referendum plan back then as well. So this report is all pretty much good news, and it's really just setting forward a timeline of future actions for you to be aware of. You know, it's not set in stone, but it's the guideline of how we anticipate completing the financing in the coming months. So I started on page three with an interest rate illustration. And for those of you that have been on the board for a number of years, you know that I like this chart. This is the daily index of the municipal bond, the 20th year of a municipal bond rate. And really, I like it because this is showing you 30 years of time. While this isn't specifically the district's borrowing rate, it shows you the trend in all interest rates for municipal borrowing. And going back 30 years, as you can see, in 2020, we established new lows pre-pandemic, and then set a new one in August during the middle of the recessionary period related to the pandemic. Rates have moved a little bit higher in the last month or two. However, we're still hovering near generational lows for locking in long-term financing for investments that'll last, you know, 30, 40, 50 years into the future. So timing for financing is very, very good. On page four, these are the guiding financing considerations that Shelley, Jill and I and my team utilize as we put together the illustrations for the referendum. On the left side, the goals were to structure the new debt in a way that it doesn't increase the payments, the mill rate towards debt service, referendum-approved debt service. Ultimately, the goal is to minimize the total interest cost during the repayment, minimize the interest rate risk, so that, you know, if rates are this low and we're going to phase in the financing, we want to plan it such that we're minimizing the potential that rates go up between the first borrow and the second borrow, et cetera. And then ultimately maximize the investment earnings. When you borrow the funds for the project, you're not going to spend them all the first month, second month, even the first year. So those funds will be invested from the time you borrow them in a project account that will be drawn upon to pay contractor invoices along the way. So on the right side of this page, we summarize the debt structuring. So think of that as the repayment plan, the assumptions we used. Currently, the. Currently, the district maintains a AA3 credit rating for long-term borrowing. So that's assigned by Moody's Investor Service. And that's really the culmination of all of your month-in, month-out planning and policy decisions, and how you budget, and, you know, what your year-end audited results are. We package that and present it to a credit analyst, typically in Chicago, sometimes in New York. But they are taking that data and comparing the district versus other districts in Wisconsin, as well as nationally. They create a report that the investors that are going to buy the bonds for the next 20 years and own them, they're consulting that credit report as they're making their decision on how low of an interest rate they're willing to lend based on your creditworthiness as a school district.
How do we stack up compared to other schools around our area and our credit?
We're good. Sure. So the chart over on the lower-left side of the page shows you the available credit levels. So AAA is the highest, and then there's the AA category. Within AA, it's AA1, AA2, and AA3. So a Wisconsin school district, because of your limits on revenue raising, the constraints to operate and repay expenses, most Wisconsin school districts are going to be either in that AA2 or 3, or the A1 or 2. So somewhere in that middle range. It's hard for a Wisconsin school district to get to that AAA because of those constraints over your ability to raise revenues to pay expenses. You know, the referendum is an example, right? You needed to ask for community support to invest in the facilities for the long term and raise revenue to be able to pay for those long-term expenditures. So to be in the AA category is very good for a Wisconsin school district, and it opens up access to the majority of the buyers in the municipal bond market to be able to purchase some portion of the district's debt for that 20-year repayment. So it helps to lower, and that helps to lower the cost to the district and ultimately the taxpayers. So the repayment structure, as I mentioned, is a 20-year repayment from the time you borrow. We had planned, and I'll show you in a minute, we had planned a two-phase borrow, one in 2021 and one in 2022, with a final payment in 2042, so 20 years from 2022. The target was no mill rate increase for the referendum-approved debt. And ultimately, we're planning your principal and interest to be a level payment at or below the current level for debt repayment that's built into this budget, which is 2.6 million. Okay, so that's kind of our planning target. And so, as you'll see on these next illustrations, we're trying to come in at or below that 2.6 million. So Phase 1 would be the first decision point at your meeting next month, December 7. It would be a 20-year financing, and it locks in the highest interest cost maturities. So you may recall, on a school district borrow, there's 20 different years of principal, and each of those years has its own interest rate. And so little by little, year 1 is your lowest rate, year 20 is your highest rate. So what you will have for your consideration is we will take bids the morning of the 7th and lock in what those rates for the 2040, 2039, 2038, 2037, 2036. The reason we're doing that is the next bullet that references bank-qualified. We did this exact plan on your previous referendum as well. You may recall, we phased it into three different borrows. We did the longest debt first, the middle debt next, and then the short, first five years of debt repayment, we did that last. Depending on how the market goes here, we may do that same plan, or we may choose to just do it in two. We'll ultimately see how this first borrow goes and come back and update the board at that time. Ultimately, bank-qualified, why that matters to me and why it should matter to you, is the federal government allows banks an additional tax incentive to buy debt from issuers, like the school district, that borrows less than 10 million in a calendar year. So far, the district has a very small lease that counts towards the tax exempt for 2020. So the plan would be to borrow as much as we can for 2020 under that $10 million limit. And by doing so, currently in the market, that benefit is approximately 0.3%, so 30 basis points, of a lower rate by staying under 10 million versus borrowing over 10 million. And so because these maturities are the farthest out, that 30 basis points on 9.6 million helps to reduce your interest cost over that 20-year period by approximately $400,000. So it may seem like a small thing, and 30 basis points may not seem like much, but when it's over a 20-year repayment period, it's significant, and it helps the rest of your financing come in and lower the interest costs associated with it as well. So the next item that we'll talk about is the refinancing or defeasance of the existing debt. So this is related to the funds that you've been levying to prepay the prior referendum debt. And ultimately, the goal here is to lower the cost of that 2014 referendum debt. And then the part that I mentioned, we'll finalize as we go, is do you borrow the rest of the approved amount in 2021? Or do you do another 10 million? And then save the final 3 million for early 2022, in which it will be repaid in those first five years or so, depending on how the rest of it comes in. Any question at a high level before I jump into some detail? Okay, so on the next page, page 5, this is what the original referendum plan, it's how we structured the original plan heading into the referendum. On the left side of the page, that first column references your outstanding debt payments related to the 2014 referendum issues. And you see that levy that's just under 2.6 million. We were planning 18 million and then 5 million. Ultimately, at the bottom of the page, the final payment was in 2042, as I mentioned. If you look at the column towards the right side of the page, it has the shaded box, the highlighted box, we were leveling the payments out at about 2.5 million during that 21 years, you know, out to 2042. And on the far right, we have the increase over this year's mill rate for debt at zero. So keep, and I guess the other final thing I'll point out with the original, is you see the interest rate inside of each of those boxes. There's a 4% and then a 4.25% on the second borrow. So again, we were purposefully being conservative, knowing that, you know, rates are low and it's easier for rates to go up by the time, you know, after the referendum than it is to go further lower, given how low rates are. So if we flip to the next page, this is an illustration of the use of the funds to prepay the 2014 debt. And so if you want to zoom in on the left side, that represents the current payments. And you'll notice the amounts are 9,850 and 9,009, because the last time we did the same thing with bank-qualified, tried to take advantage of that tax break that banks receive, so that you get lower borrowing rates. And if you look at those rates, they're locked in anywhere from 2 to 3.5%. And so the maturities that are eligible to be refinanced are the ones in the yellow boxes on each issue. So the 2014 issue, its principal from 2027 through 2034, at anywhere from 3 to 3.5%. And then on the 2015 issue, its maturity is from 2025 through 2027, and then also the 2035. And again, very low interest rates between 2 and 3.25%. So as you work your way to the right side of this page, the asterisks in the yellow boxes there in the middle represents the maturities that we would hypothetically be refinancing. So we would be calling all of the 2014 maturities and only the last maturity of the 2015. And the reason we're doing that is we're trying to maximize the savings. So we only want to refinance maturities that generate significant savings. So there might be a time when we come back and look at the 25 to 27 maturities of the 2015 issue. But right now, at the current interest rate level, they don't generate enough to keep them in that refinancing. So it's better off to leave them as is. So as you work your way to the right side of this page, you see a sample 9,160,000 borrowing. And one thing I want to point out is see the box at the bottom, the dotted box there that's empty? And you see the 1,005 of potential debt service savings? What we're doing here is we're using the 3 million, just shy of 3.1 million of funds, and we're paying that 3.5% debt with those funds, such that we're shortening the time period to repay the 2014 debt issues and 2015 debt issues. And at the same time, lowering those interest rates from that 3 to 3.5 to what you see there is the new average rate, which is just over 2%. So we're lowering your cost of funds by a point to a point and a half. Ultimately, setting up the debt structure such that we can layer in this new 2020 debt in and around those final payments, because as I showed you on that first chart, we are currently at rates that are lower than back in 2014 and 2015. Okay, so we're not only prepaying and shortening this debt with those funds on hand, we're also refinancing it from 3 to 3.5 down to what's now 2. So the aggregate is what happens on that far-right column, where in the first few years, the payments are a little bit higher slightly, but you have significant reductions in payments from 2032 to 2035 of a million and a half reduction. And that'll come back on the next page. But ultimately, the gross savings over the future time, when we back out the 3.1 that you're putting in, you're reducing that interest cost by 1,659. And then on a present value basis, we discount those future savings into today's dollars, and it's about 280,000 on a present value basis. So because this isn't locked in, that lower box highlights the sensitivity of this refinancing. And so for every 10 basis points up or down, it changes the savings by about 115,000 or so on a present value basis. So, you know, ultimately, as we work our way through this process, December 7, you'd lock in the first bank-qualified for the new issue. An actual item in January would lock in this refinancing or restructuring. And then we would come back likely in February and, you know, do the next phase of the 2020 referendum. So within the next two months, we will know a pretty solid picture of how all of this fits together and how much lower your interest cost will be related to both the prior referendum and this referendum. Okay?
After your opening mic, it's all good news, right?
Yes. I know, it's a lot of detail here.
No wonder you wanted to come in person, yes.
Sorry, what?
No, it's good you wanted to come in person to tell us all this. Thank you.
This would have been hard over Zoom, that's true. But ultimately, we're just, the time Jill and I spent was figuring out, we looked at a number of different ways to do this, trying to figure out the best way to fit the pieces together such that we arrive at that lowest total interest cost and that future payment, you know, out or below that 2.6 million that's currently built into this current budget. So as we flip to the next page, this is the updated financing plan from that original. You'll see that first column now, over on the far left, you'll see that empty box from 2032 to 2035. That represents that refinancing and prepayment of that highest interest cost debt. That kind of sets the base. This first box is what the action on December 7 would be. And it locks in the rates on the maturities from 2036 through 2040. Right now, we're showing that at a 2.76, I think that is? Took my glasses off.
2.78.
2.78. And we are being conservative with that number as well right now, because we still have three weeks or so before that gets finalized. But, you know, even at a conservative number, that's still significantly below the 4% that we had used during the referendum. Then you move over to the next box, and so you have 13,350 remaining of the 23 million authorized. As I mentioned, if the bank-qualified is still beneficial the same way it is today, we would likely bring back another, we'd probably split this box into two and bring back up to 10 million, and then keep the final 3.5 million, or I'm sorry, 3.3 million for an early 2022 borrow. And there's a couple reasons for that. One is you're not paying the interest on that 3.3 million that you probably don't need until 2022. But it also gives us some flexibility with how we refi, or repay it as you're heading into a new Bino budget year. We don't know what the school finance variables are going to look like. So this gives us some flexibility as you head into that budget development as to what you want to do for repaying that final 3.3. By that point, we will have locked in approximately 20 million of the total, which then will give us a significant amount of certainty of, are we going to come in at or below that 2.6 million target? So as you look at the shaded box here, it said, the titling is Fund 39 Debt Levy Existing Plus New. And you'll see, relative to what I showed you as our original plan, which had that payment at 2.5 million all the way out until 2042, currently, this update has it at 2.4 million, so $100,000 reduction, and, most importantly, it's a year less. So it finishes in 2041. So how can we do that? If you scroll down just a touch to see that lower right corner of the box. Because the interest rate of this blended average is at 280. So instead of the blended average of a 405 that we were using during the referendum, you're about a point and a quarter under that estimate, and we refinanced some of the 2014 debt to save that 1,600. Your estimate of avoided cost, interest cost, let's call it that. I mean, it's not all savings because we were conservative, right? It's just, it's, interest cost that you had communicated could potentially be there, that because rates are coming in at under 3%, you're not needing to pay that back. So that amount, that avoidance of interest is over $4 million, which is what allows us to eliminate the final year of payment at 2.5 million and, you know, create a gap from 2.6 down to 2.4 for the repayment of that debt. So instead of a zero increase, it actually, as this lays out, would result in a potential for a reduction in that debt-related, referendum debt-related mill rate, which is ideal and outstanding, and I wish I could take credit. It's really because the market is still very, very low and very favorable, but it puts you on a path to achieve those structuring goals that we had talked about at the outset. So I'm winded. I said a lot of detail. Hopefully, the big picture of how the pieces fit together, though, is what came through. You know, we would be taking this a step at a time, ultimately to position the district the best way we can to achieve that future payment related to this referendum investment that the community support of the board and district with.
So the whole board understands our hope tonight was that Brian was going to come, and he'd be able to hear the, all of the details and him here to answer questions. And then December 7 is when we would ask for action on that first phase. And I would imagine that each time we meet to talk about it, we have some kind of a forecasting of what would be the next steps after that. And so if you have any questions now, it would be great. Or if they come to you after you walk away and start looking at the documents again, let us know. We can certainly reach out to Brian to make sure you have all the information that you need.
Jill, did you say you put this on Moodle?
I did.
So Amy and Scott do have it, okay, thank you.
You know, people wondered how we could do this and not raise their debt payment level. Now I understand it. I don't think I could explain it to somebody.
Yeah, we're glad you know what you're doing there, Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I do have a one question, so we're, we're using the re-interest rates to pay off the old debt with the money that we're borrowing, does that mean we should not be sold?
Uh, I just wanna caution, I, I wanna caution one piece of it, so you're using the, the monies that you had planned in, in recent years to prepaid debt. You're using that to prepaid debt, the debt that's already out there at three and a half percent. So that's saving money. What's left at, you know, three to three and a quarter percent. We're refinancing to two percent, very similar to what you would do in a home mortgage in this environment, right?
In case, if it could happen, whether we had passed the second referendum or not, right?
Correct, that's what I, I just wanted to caution, the blend between the two. So while we're looking at financing this new investment. We, we are also evaluating the best way to minimize the costs of your, the previous investment. So to Shelley's point, we could have done those two things regardless of the outcome of the referendum. On top of that, because you received voter approval for the, the, this investment. We're trying to figure out the best way to fit it all together and borrow the new debt around. The old debt and, and achieve that lower payment going forward. And the interest cost avoidance of over four million dollars. That, that's, it's, it's two pieces, but we ultimately, they both contribute to the fact we're reducing the cost to the taxpayer. By over four million dollars.
And so then once we borrow it, is it related to us for the, the new money?
Yeah, so when, when the, when the, um, the closing date, which is scheduled for December twenty-second of that nine million, six fifty. So that would then get deposited into a project account. It's for the twenty twenty referendum. It may pay some architect fees in the next few weeks to a month. But, but the rest will be invested a month out, two months out, three months out, until it's needed for the bulk of the construction.
That was my question, yeah, it's earning a lot of money while we're spending it.
But because you're borrowing at two percent, it's not earning very much, so I don't want you to think that there's a, a, a pot of gold there, that's.
Okay, any more questions for Brian? Okay, so on December seventh, we will have bids from all kinds of banks wanting to be our lending source.
Correct, you'll, you'll receive bids from an, from underwriting firms who are talking to banks, insurance companies, municipal bond funds. Uh, those are the typical buyers of, of uh, uh, double A three. Uh, school district in Wisconsin, uh, bond offering. So, but yes, via those underwriting firms, you would get the, the uh, the, the bank rates that we were talking about at the outset.
Okay. Anything to add, Joe, or anything else?
No, I appreciate working with Brian and she can see the very high levels.
We know, we know.
We did look at different varieties of how we could do this and we really felt this was the best option for the district, so. It was all those positives that he just just said.
After you worked so hard to talk to the community about the referendum, wouldn't it be exciting to be, get them all to listen to tell them this story as well? You know, I mean, it's exciting to have so many possibilities and very few people would engage enough to learn all about it, but it's, it's great stuff. Thanks for making the drive, Brian, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, have a good evening and we'll talk again on the seventh.
Okay, well, see you December seventh, thank you. Okay, next we have Kyle Mastis, you, you're up next.
Thank you.
Remind.
There we go. Okay, um. So I was asked to come in and just kinda discuss with you guys how things are going with our school resource deputy program. Um, kinda give you guys an idea of, um, of what I do and how things have been, been operating. So, um, I just went back the last couple of years and. Obviously, the last couple of school years have been a little odd. But this gives you at least an idea of how often I'm in the schools, how often I'm seeing our students. I worked my schedule to be um, half days, so split between three districts, it works better to do half days. In each district than it does to do a full day in one district and then rotate through doing full days. This way it allows me to be in each, be in each district at least three to four days a week. Whereas otherwise, I might only be in a district one day, two days a week, depending on how the schedule flows. So it allows me to spend more time or hit more days in a district and get more contact with that district frequently. Rather than um, longer contact every one day and being spread out more. Um, but as you can see, um, you know, even the shortened school year last year, um, I had all of, or part of ninety days. Um, where I was in district. And so far this year, um, all are part of thirty-seven days uh, within the district. So, um. One of the aspects that uh, I've been, I'm trying to provide to the districts, to um. You guys specifically and the other school districts is. Training and uh, education to staff, to students, to um, everyone available in the district. So some of that comes down through something we've been doing for a while with Alice. Um, I also teach a Stop the Bleed class to some of the high school classes, um, along with their health class and their CPR first aid. So it's kind of an advanced first aid that goes into more advanced bleeding control, stuff like that. Um, I teach NetStar, or NetSmart's presentations, which is a uh, um. An internet safety presentation that there's um, curriculum all the way from kindergarten up through. Um, high school level that touches on, you know, safe and appropriate use of social media. Um, safe and appropriate use of video games, all that kind of stuff. And um, with the high schoolers does a, a little bit of some of the scare tactics of these are the bad things that are out there that can, that you need to be paid, be paying attention to and be careful with. Um, so we can try and avoid some of the dangerous um, things that they can do that can hurt them or that can get them into trouble. Um, Good Drugs Gone Bad is a program that is designed for the seventh graders. Um. To be honest, we haven't done a lot of that one as of yet because it was planned to be last spring. And that didn't work out, and then this year scheduling has been complicated to try and uh, try and get that going. But it is still on the table, we're working with middle school to try and coordinate that. That and the next one, QPR, are all done through Together for Jackson County Kids. Um, I sit on the, the board for that and help coordinate. The activities of Together for Jackson County Kids and our outreach into the schools. UPR is a uh, um, a suicide prevention uh, program. It's question, persuade and respond, or question, persuade and refer. Which is um, a, a way that we teach kids how to deal with um, someone, a friend, a family member, someone who's. Having suicidal ideations or suicidal problems, and it helps them know um, where to. Where to go for that help for themselves. Um, and then along with that, on the presentation class discussion is just various classroom discussions. Usually these tend to be in like the high school social studies, government classes, cause that's. Where a lot of my background and experience tends to fit into what they're talking about. So um, everything from uh, talking about uh, Fourth Amendment, Fifth Amendment, constitutional rights, all of that kind of stuff. How um, how law enforcement does our job in the real world. Um, we've, this last year, um, I've made an effort to go around to um, to as many of these classes as I can. And try and do more open discussions. Um, over the summer, I was able to, to go to the School Resource Officer um, course. And uh, and get the actual National School Resource Officer Association um, basic level training. And through that, kinda got the idea to, to talk about, just do more of like an open um. Town hall meeting kind of discussion with students in the classes, so we did that and. Um, this year, ob- obviously a lot of it has focused around. Um, some of our social issues, some of the things going on with law enforcement in the community and how that's been affecting. Our students, what they've been seeing and what they've been hearing in the news and on social media. Um, and it gives an open discussion where they can ask me questions and we can discuss things and try and. Clarify things that they don't understand and, and I can get a better understanding of where they're at and understand what they um, are seeing, what they're feeling about what's going on. Um. That has uh, I think been, been very beneficial up to this point and helped um, to kinda open that uh. Open that doorway, open that discussion, so um. Move to the next. And this one's just kind of a list of um, a lot of the, the trainings that I have sought out and um. Gotten for myself to bring back to the district to, to be able to. Um, assist with a variety of different uh. I guess aspects of, of school life, of security, safety, um. Uh, mental wellbeing for the students, all that kind of stuff. So everything from the uh, mental first aid, um, or mental first aid, adolescent mental health, um. The basic threat assessment, UPR, Alice. And then on down to a, a bunch of uh, um, webinars that have been made available, um. Even with the problems that we had through COVID with the um, the issues with being shut down all summer long. Uh, and the end of uh, last spring, the Office of School Safety did a really good job of putting out. A lot of um, training content, uh, free and available um, online. So I took advantage of as much of that as I could to try and get those um, perspectives and that uh, that information delivered back.
Before you go on, one of the comments that I had written down that I wanted to share about Kyle, he is so driven by new learning, he really finds that exciting. And he's constantly, I, I feel like I say no to him more than is even reasonable. He's always arguing like, I just went to this great thing, it's where we can, I can help with this. And, and this fall, it was so much of a, I'm struggling to get what's right in front of me to think that proactively, but. He's very, very driven by that new learning and just really um, helps to elevate all those discussions within our district. And so you're really, really committed to that, um, constantly making sure you're improving your skills in your toolbox and then. I'm helping to grow our system around that, I really appreciate that about your work.
Thank you. Alright, so I'm kinda along those lines. Uh, this is the basic concept for a school resource officer as put forward by NASSRO, the National Association of School Resource Officers. And it's a three, um, three-pronged approach, a triangle, a triad, however you wanna call it. And the idea is that the base is a law enforcement officer, cause that's where we come from, that's, that's kinda our home base, that's, that's our, our main. Um, background and experience. And we bring that in, in the aspect of training and security, um, and then we also bring that in. From time to time, being asked to step in, in a law enforcement capacity to deal with issues that are coming up within the school. Um, but more so than that, uh, we try and lean as much as we can on the other two. Being a um, classroom presenter, informal teacher and uh, informal counselor mentor to the, the students. Be someone else that they can reach out to, someone they can um, can, can talk to, can bring issues to. Can discuss problems going on inside, outside of school, someone who's not necessarily, you know. Directly part of the, the school district, but is, is related to that and can maybe. Help mediate or negotiate some issues with that students might be having. Um, so. In blending those three together, I think we find a lot, um, a lot more of a. A balanced approach than, than just coming in as a, as a law enforcement officer and that just, you know, that being a sole. Job for, for me. Um, I actually find myself more often than not doing the other two. And honestly, the law enforcement officer role outside of just the general safety and security presence part of it. Um, tends to be less of what I, what I'm using. I'm, I'm using much more that um, classroom presenter, teacher, um. Um, I guess passer of knowledge, um, and the uh, um, counselor mentor um, aspect of, of the position. Alright, but on the law enforcement activities, um. These are some of the issues that have, that have come up over the past three years uh, within. The school district, I don't have, um, I didn't go so far as to put down numbers for each. You know, how many of each or whatnot, but to give you guys kinda just a, an idea of the. The wide variety of, of issues that we do deal with. And these can be dealt with in a variety of different ways, everything from. A citation, a juvenile referral to a, you know, documentation, warning, whatever is determined necessary for that situation. Um, if, if at all possible, um, I try and handle situations with students at the lowest level. Um, try to handle it as much as possible without getting them involved in the criminal justice system. Um, I try as much as possible to allow the school to handle the discipline part of it. And, and deal with things that way without having to go the route of doing referrals um, or citations. And, you know. As, and in those cases, even if we do have um, school discipline, um, more often than not, I'm, I'm still. Completing a uh, completing a report documenting on our own, so we have uh, documentation through the sheriff's office, but then. Are um, are leaving most of the, the actual disciplinary. Action up to the, to the school district to handle within there. So it leaves it a little bit less formal um, on the, on student records and stuff like that. And I guess to kinda um, start closing, closing things up here and move towards, towards the end so we can get out of here, um. To look at how we assess value of the program. And, you know, these questions that I would pose to you guys is, is the program valuable to your schools? And how do you, how do you assess that value and how do you look at that? Um, you know, all of the different aspects that, that we bring to it. Um, that liaison, um, activity between the school district and the county government and law enforcement and whatnot. Um, the informal education um, aspect or the. The ability to help and assist um, and bring different perspectives into the classroom. And then um, you know, SRO or SRD programs tend to suffer from um. Some of the same issues that we ran into with uh, like DARE programs and stuff like that, it's very hard at the end of the day. To prove a negative, it's very hard at the end of the day to show how many kids didn't get in trouble or didn't use drugs or didn't. Um, you know, do something um, negative because of that intervention, because we were there, because we. Um, had that relationship with them because of a, um, a, a contact in class. Um, it's, it's kinda the, the struggle with programs like this is that in a lot of ways, if we do our job right and if. If I'm doing um, enough preventative and proactive work to, to build relationships with students and try and. Um. Try and guide them towards uh, better choices, guide them away from those choices that are gonna get them in trouble. It's very hard to document that, it's very hard to, to show that in a graph, to show that, you know, because of that intervention. These students did not get themselves in trouble later on. So, I don't know, I think that would be it, so thank you guys for giving the opportunity to talk. And I will open up to any questions I have.
I have a question, Kyle, a lot of the, one of those first pages you talk about, all the presentations you're making. It seems like it's really centered towards high school, is that where you spend most of your time?
That is, high school and middle school tends to be where most of my, my time gets spent. Um, I do try and make an effort to, to stop through and at least be a presence in the elementary schools. Um more more often Red Creek, um.
Playground.
Playground, yeah, just try and be there in the hallways, to wave at them, say hi as we're moving between classes, walk around, talk during lunchtime. Um stuff like that, just to be that presence in the building, um but obviously as. As things um move on and as as these kids get older, more of my um focused attention tends to be. At that high school, middle school level where where we um probably start running into more of the issues where I can. Be of a um more direct benefit.
Incidentally, have responded to calls at Red Creek to be helpful when there's that specific incident or something like that.
Even even Forest Street to help deal with parents and.
You mentioned briefly the well child checks, um particularly during our time of closure, Kyle's been fantastic echoing to reach out to some of the families that just have not engaged with us at all. He and the social worker or he by himself will go and knock on the door and, you know, we're worried about you, we haven't seen you or everything, alright, so he's. Really done an awful lot of those well child uh type checkups for us during this time, so. Other questions for Kyle? Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle. Now, do Scott and Amy have an ability to raise their hand or their stomach, okay, okay, just wondering, sure. Okay, we're um scheduled at seven for the covid update, so we can move on to gifts and grants.
I would love to talk about gifts and grants.
We got a lot of them today.
Whole week buckets, and there's one that's not even in your packet that came in since then, it's exciting stuff, so let's start off first. Um with the ones that were in there, the three thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars from Ashley Furniture for that Vex Robot uh Classroom Starter Kit. Um you may recall that we have a Vex Robot program in fifth grade uh at the middle school, thank you so much, Kyle. Uh and also in the high school tech ed, at the elementary, Christie Roche actually manages it, at the high school and middle school, it is our tech ed teacher that does it, but. They're very expensive kits, and so it's great that Ashley Furniture is committed to continuing to growing the robotics around our region, so that's great. Um also, uh the Lunda Charitable Trust, uh boy, oh boy, it was uh quite a few years ago, two thousand nine. That we wrote a grant to Lunda Charitable Trust for right about that same dollar amount to purchase smart boards and. That was the grant that put smart boards in almost all of the Third Street classrooms, and so as the building's not even here, we can recognize that was quite a while ago. Um each year as we go through our technology budget in the district, we've talked about. How we can allocate enough funds to get a replacement cycle for all of those when such a large number are grant funded, obviously they're not budgeted for, and so. Um the Technology Steering Committee has started to, um the agenda's not up, just you know, um, that's okay. Um the Technology Steering Committee has uh started talking about that and they decided, well, let's start writing different grants and see what is possibly available. And Brandon Jair, wow, 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 he wrote a um.
I see his letters were really nice.
Yes, he wrote some very great letters to Carl Holmquist and um I asked him, I said, will you send me the confirmation, because when he told me, he goes, I just got a phone confirmation, I said. Carl is pretty darn trustworthy, we'll take him at his word in a phone conversation, and when you get it in writing, we'll certainly share that, so. How incredibly exciting, right now there is not um thirty-two thousand dollars worth of smart boards that need to be replaced, but how wonderful to be able to replace those that needed. And then create that fund for that continuous renewal of those, so that is really, really, really very generous and fantastic. Um the Jackson County, completely different topic, uh the Jackson County Correction Institute um has given us six hundred dollars that they want to put into our angel fund for lunches. They um have started their um soul selling ice cream into the P I O C, I don't speak most or um. Corrections language, so I wasn't sure what that meant, people in our care, if you're wondering what a P I O C is, I looked it up and so. Um people in our care, though, um they sold ice cream for that six hundred dollars, so that was very exciting. I also wanted to read, we just received this today, um today's the sixteenth and it's dated today, um this is from Ellen Maldonar. Um unfortunately, she just um, we're having some technical, yeah, I don't like my shortcut, I usually is, okay? Picked her up, I'd love to read you this card if I could, Marty just scanned it in, um but we got it today, it says. Um in October this year, the Tiger Football family lost another favorite son, my father Foster Frosty Wusso. Was a B R F class of fifty-four graduate, he was also a B R F Tiger Football veteran, having played the line in fifty-two and fifty-three, many years later, his favorite way to spend a cool crisp. Fall night was to be following his Tiger Boys up and down the sidelines and calling out words of encouragement in his deep and rumbling voice. In his twilight years, he never missed a Friday night W W I S radio broadcast, and when the stars were in perfect alignment, he could be seen on the home bleachers platform. Often accompanied by Big Brother Chuck, on behalf of our family, please accept these funds in Frosty's memory, we hope Tiger Football can put them to good use. Sincerely, Ellen Wusso Maldonar and family, that was a one thousand fifteen hundred dollar donation to Tiger Football, which. I just love that, and she sent the, she sent the picture of Frosty, we could look at that helmet and say, oh my gosh, I can't. That was a protective gear, but um just a very, very great gesture, they decided to have the memorials um steered towards Tiger Football, so. I know Coach Vingan will be very excited, as was Mr. Wyden, to put those to good use, so what an incredible night for gifts and grants from our community.
That is wonderful. Okay, we, the motion to approve the gifts and grants is, shall we, as presented? Thank you. Thank you, all in favor, say aye, aye, opposed. Okay. We're just a couple minutes away.
I can, I can share with you, um I created um. In effort to. Make sure you have all the information in terms of you, and this, I will make sure that Marty puts in Google, so it's available afterwards. I put a little note for all the things I'd like you to put in a little afterwards, they're in the folder, um I just wanted to give you some updates on our current reality and. Um just talk you through that, oh, there's Elizabeth, let's see if we have, not quite yet, alright. We'll wait just a moment for Ellen, hopefully she doesn't have any troubles keeping on, I'm sure she's not.
When they talk, will they be up on the big screen?
No, because I don't have the screen.
Okay.
We could either do, we have no choice, either.
No, no, I just.
Yep, um so I just wanted to give you some of um the updates that I just wanted to talk you through, and as you know, I called all the board members last. Friday to talk you briefly through it, um what I have invited Ellen to do, I talked with her probably four different times last week. Um and um talked to our neighboring school districts, and it's just been this constant flow of conversation about what. Um what is the right decision to make, how do we make those decisions, how do we know when to stop, how do we know when to pivot, all of those different things, and so. I just wanted to let you know that as of today, there are sixty-four staff members that are currently home, um. And I wanted to just give you an idea of some of the incredible creativity that's happening in our schools, um there are several classrooms. Um that there's an aide sitting in the classroom with the students and the teachers on the smart board at home, teaching the students, that is happening um. Way more often than you may think, I bet every building has that happening um currently. Um there are at the secondary levels, when we hired those long-term substitutes to be in there. Um that substitute will go into the high school cafeteria and there will be four different classrooms of kids. Being supervised by one adult and their content is coming to them through um the canvas and and. They have their earbuds in and they are working to uh work on their own content while the supervisor is basically there to make sure they maintain social distancing and. You know, that they're supervised, but certainly not providing any education, um and there was a day um last before the middle school closed. They had four classes in the L M C, I'm sorry, in the theater, and then they had two or three more classes in the L G I, so they were short. Like five classroom teachers, and that was with other aides being in the classrooms. At Gebhardt, uh this week Tammy is down to almost, I don't know if she has one aide left in the building?
One aide, one teacher, maybe.
One aide and one teacher left, because there was a couple positive students um in that building, and so um. The staffing is a very, very, very real problem, and so I know that there is an awful lot of disagreement as to what are the. Uh responsible steps to take in order to try to stop the spread, and to be honest, I'm not even advocating on. Along those lines, I'm simply saying what we're currently doing is not sustainable, and so we really felt that the opportunity with the holidays coming up. Gave us maximum time for people to stay away from each other and to get healthy. While missing minimal instructional days was really what we were hoping to to maximize, that um we could try to get as much of our staff back as possible. And so, um I wanted to talk with you about what those virtual schedules are going to look like, um. And and our expectation is that unless the staff members are either in quarantine. Um due to being in close contact or in isolation because they're symptomatic, uh have tested positive or awaiting test results. That we uh expect them to teach from school, so we are asking them to come and report to their assigned workspace as opposed to working from home. I will tell you that there's an awful lot of staff that are excited about that, because last spring they were frustrated that they couldn't get into the school. But if you recall, that was very different in that we were told we must shut off our buildings, this time we're being given the opportunity to make the decisions ourself, and so. We are requiring them to be in school uh during that time, and so our elementary, they're going to follow pretty much the same schedule that our current. Elementary virtual classes do, um and that is primarily the core content is delivered in the morning. Um along with some small group work in the afternoon, I have talked before about how our virtual sections have gotten very large. The last six-week switch, we had more students opt into virtual, and so those numbers just kept getting bigger. Because of this switch now for the next couple of weeks, we're going to rebalance the class sizes in some of those. Tony Service just rebooted and kicked me off, working on it, okay, so Ellen will be here shortly, um. There we go, um and so that schedule will stay pretty similar, we had some conversations today, some of the feedback we got from families is it's very difficult. If there's an adult that is working from home on their wifi, and then they get, you know, three, four kids who also need that same wifi, that's very challenging for them, and so. A couple things that we are going to try to mitigate that, um the first is that the elementary core content is going to be delivered primarily in the morning. And then the high school, they're hoping to somewhat flip their classes in that there will be content available for the kids any other time. But then they would spend spend a shorter amount of time that is more for the engagement activities with the teacher in the afternoon, so let's say. They were going to read a chapter and then do an activity in class, the teacher would assign that chapter and the kid could do it any other time, you have to sit on a zoom and watch to do that. And then in the afternoon, they would have some discussion groups, some kind of informal assessment, they would do something with the content that was delivered earlier. So that would mean that everyone needed to be live streaming at the same time, um we also are going to use an internet cafe idea. We're going to open up, we've got several different facilities that we could do it at, we're really unsure how many are really going to want to take advantage of it. So we're going to start with just one spot, and if the need is greater, then we have that flexibility. What we're thinking about is the high school commons to start, and from seven forty-five to three thirty, we have like big. Red spots marked six feet away from each other where uh kids could come in and work independently, they have to have their earbuds in and it could be during the live teaching. Or it could be during um just because they need it for other pieces, um if you are a K five student, you could take advantage of that, but you have to come with a parent. So if there's a parent available, we're going to offer it two evenings and see if we have some interest, to see if there's some parents that want to come in to use it. Uh between three thirty and seven, so we know that the schools have some of the best wifi around, and so we want to make that available. Um for families and we'll, um again, we're going to start with the high school commons, if we get lots of people, we could use the middle school commons, we could use the west gym, we could use. So we've got other possibilities that we certainly could use, um but we're unsure how many will use it. Um when it comes to transportation for that, right now we're not planning on that, however, um what we had talked about with the principals was that if there's a family. Where the kids are just not engaging, and when we ask them, you know, how can we be helpful, you know, we don't have wifi, could you come in, nope, we can't, well, then maybe we can schedule somebody to go pick them up. So we could take that barrier away as well, so trying to get away from the broadening issue, and as I've said several times. Wifi is not necessarily a financial situation for everybody, sometimes it's as I live in a spot where no matter how much I pay, I just can't get good connectivity, and so. We want to take care of that as well, the next piece is childcare, because we are requiring all of our staff to come into the building to work. We are going to provide childcare for their school-aged children, um we assume that if they have children who are earlier than school age, they already have a childcare plan for them. While they come to work, and so that's not our concern, um we did have staff asking, like, you know, I teach high school and I have a kindergarten daughter, can they just sit in the back of my room? And we said, nope, we're going to provide some, something elsewhere so that your full attention is on the students that you're teaching. Because they're all school-aged kids, they will all have some virtual instruction that they can be engaging in, and so we'll divide the kids. And send a survey out to staff to see how many kids we're talking about, K one is on a virtual schedule, two through five is on a virtual schedule, six through eight is on a virtual schedule. So the programming will be from seven fifteen in the morning until three thirty in the afternoon and um we'd bridge that gap for them.
That's such a great way to use some of our staff.
Absolutely, absolutely, so um childcare, we are crystal clear, the um. Emergency that we have created with some of our families, we absolutely understand, and we thought so long and hard about, is there any way to keep. Forest Street open, is there any way to keep, you know, the elementary kids here, um but the staff is out across the system, not just in one building, and so. Um we've started to talk with BRAP, Blackberry Childcare, the Montessori School, Boys and Girls Club. All of them, the Boys and Girls Club has been pretty um aggressive about wanting to engage with us in, do we possibly have any staff, and they even said that they would pay the staff. Um that they could use some of the rooms at their site at the Linda Center um to provide childcare, they're a very affordable option. They, during their normal programming, don't go below third grade, so I'm unsure if they're contemplating changing that. Um the Montessori School said that they would be open, they don't have a lot of slots, but they have some, and they would need more staff, and then. Um BRAP wasn't super interested in.
Yeah, they're still talking about it, but it's maybe not.
They're unsure that they want to continue providing that, and so that would be even more uh challenging. Um I did have one parent who, when they got the message, said, I just opened up in my home childcare, and I said, fantastic, I can't advertise that, but I can make sure all the. Secretaries are the ones that'll usually through that from families, so trying to connect those dots, um. Again, we know that that is the greatest challenge for our families, and so I don't know if you have thoughts or ideas or um, you know, any avenues that we haven't already explored. But we certainly want to um support that in any way possible. And so then the last part would be coming to school, again, because this closure is our choice, um we can invite some kids in, like um with the situation that the high schools had. On Wednesdays, they have um head groups of kids coming in in on Wednesdays to do some of their hands-on labs that they otherwise weren't doing, or some of the kids that were. Um I think the A P class brought kids physically in, some of the classes that were struggling, the kids were brought in, so we have the opportunity to invite in small groups at any point in time during this closure. Um our kids that are um special needs who have specific therapies, we will be able to still provide those therapies, and if we need to provide. Transportation for them, we can, um. Just about there, okay.
I'm watching for her.
Okay, I am, so, um so those were kind of the updates, and again, admin meeting uh happened today, and so. This is where a lot of this information came from, um I just wanted to address for just a moment, um I felt during previous conversations, when we've talked about this topic that I've asked you. Are these decisions you want the board to make, are these, do you want a special meeting called, or do you feel like we administratively have the responsibility to make these? I, my perception was that you have granted us that decision-making authority, is that still the general consensus of the board, or is somebody interested in revisiting that? Okay, I, we certainly.
Yep, I was just going to say, I think it was great that you notified us ahead of time, it was to extend for a longer period of time, and I think we should talk about that.
Fair enough, yep, yep, and so that is words that I've said every time that it, so and when Ellen comes on, she can certainly speak her own words, I, we've talked about. What would be a gating criteria to come back, and to be honest, in the end, we decided not to attach it to any other than we have no staff to be able to. Um physically man the building, so, oh, I think we just adjusted.
No, it's just me.
Okay, I, we moved, so I thought maybe that was Ellen, but it's still, um, to be honest, we thought that, um, so, right now, um. Elizabeth Pardo spends an obnoxious amount of hours, um along with either Stephanie Gill or I, but always Elizabeth doing contact tracing and keeping up with those spreadsheets. With asymptomatic and lineless and all that stuff, we were like, how does that happen during Christmas break, are we really going to keep all that up during Christmas break? And Ellen had some great suggestions that we, you know, first reach out to our staff in late December, how many of you are. On quarantine or isolation right now and ineligible to come back, um and that would give us that first blush, and then I do think that we would again have to survey families. Because we had done it every six weeks prior, what were your intentions, um as we shared that at the um. End of the first six weeks, there was more middle school kids that opted out, and now we're just coming up to the end of the first trimester, where high school families were going to have that choice. And unfortunately, we leave home today, heard from some of the families that had been, God bless you, had been virtual at the high school who were planning on sending their kids back face to face. Which that's one of the first times that's happened, everyone else has been, the kids were coming face to face, and so it felt terrible just at the time they were ready to engage the other way, so. We're really hopeful that some of those families can use that internet cafe as a way to keep a routine for their kid, get up, get dressed, go, and and there's where um it can happen. Um so again, we're hopeful that some of these pieces in place will be able to help them.
Are any of our neighboring neighboring districts, they could have been this too?
Almost in our close before us, um they had shut down probably a couple days before the middle school. They had shut down probably a couple of days before the middle school did, and it's for staffing. And so, when they look at our, again, we've talked multiple times every week, they looked at my dashboard, and they said, "That's gotta be a mistake, you don't have that many active cases." And I said, "We do." They said, "How on earth are you open?" So, that's the good news, bad news of a larger system, right? We can absorb more positions more easily than a smaller system. You're short four staff members, and it's, you know, crippling. Plus, they didn't choose to do four classrooms with one adult, and we could certainly question whether we think that was the best academic situation or not. But it was our attempt to do everything we could to continue to still invite kids to the building. And I do think, that was part of my and Ellen's conversation, at what point is it diminishing returns? At what point is there such a revolving door that the academic content is no longer better than it would be? At the elementary, several parents, so over the weekend, I sent out a message on Friday. I probably got eight replies, probably ten, maybe ten, twelve replies. All but two were very understanding and positive, and there was certainly one that was extremely disappointed who had elementary-aged children. And then, there was someone else who just had a suggestion that perhaps all staff and students were N-95s, and then, we could all come whether we're sick or not. I'm not sure public health would appreciate that.
I think, I think if you could, like, can share our conversation a little bit, that the biggest problem is the quarantine and the way to it. Because now that people are in the city, it's the quarantine.
Well, there are more positives, for sure, so there are more people getting sick.
But it can be asymptomatic and not sick, it can be positive. But, you know, if you had a family member, I had one of my patients who called and said, "Why is this happening?" So, her husband was sent home from work because he had a close contact. So, that starts his fourteen day. She got COVID, not from him, because he's been negative. And then, it's after her ten-day, that's him from his... He has to go another two weeks. So, he had his month of time off to come, which is tragic.
And so, we have a lot of people trying to teach from home, but at some point, you need bodies in the building, you know, even to be able to do that. Unfortunately, we did have a couple of staff members that were quite ill and could not work from home. And I believe the more significant ones have all recovered at this point, but we had a couple that were quite, quite ill, but...
I had a question.
Yeah.
When, after this, this, uh, Christmas break, would there be, I don't know, administration, they're gonna try to prioritize any school, building to come back before another one? For example, elementary before middle school? Because I know right now, we've already, this week, we've already singled out the middle school because of staffing.
Yeah.
But if the, just, you know, I'm gonna go up, if there's enough to staff them, elementary schools, they bring this back, that back, or whatever it takes, that type of system.
I, to be honest, that was our biggest decision, was could we possibly keep elementary open as long as possible? That absolutely was what we were thinking. The, the spread at the elementary school was really quite, if you look at grade grade, they have our highest, they have our most kids, for certain. So, I understand that, but they also had an awful lot of active cases. And so, it was, there's Ellen talking on, direct it. So, yeah, I, I agree with you that while academically, it is better for all grade levels to be there, I think as far as disruption in the community, being able to keep our elementary kids on some kind of a schedule is far better. And, and some of the parents even said to me, because unfortunately, I was calling to contact trace on Friday night, and I saw, well, I have you, I may as well tell you that there's gonna be a school messenger coming out. And, and one of them even said, "I would rather know now to figure something out, as opposed to you calling me at eleven in the morning and saying, 'Your kid's home for the next two weeks, figure it out.'" So, absolutely. Hi, Ellen, thanks so much for joining us.
Hi, so sorry about that. You might know, two minutes before seven o'clock, the county servers decided to reboot. Oh, my God.
See, and you don't have control over that either, just like you don't so many other things, right?
Oh, my life is just a show.
Well, Ellen, so I just want you to understand where we're at. First of all, I just read your very, very lovely card. Thank you so much for the generous memorial in honor of your dad. That will be put to great use, and it was just such a lovely card, so thank you for sharing that with us. Second, I have the admin team on Zoom, so they are mostly home. And Elizabeth, who I can see that is clearly not your home, unless you made your living room look a lot like your office. And then, I have the majority of the board members here in the room with two of them on Zoom. So, you are on a speaker, so when you speak, everyone in the room can hear you, they just can't see you.
I wish you were, would've told me that, Shelley, I could've walked over quicker than I could've rebooted this one, too.
All right. So, Ellen, thanks for joining us. I gave them kind of an update, because since you and I have talked about inviting you to this meeting, we had to make a more significant decision. But I would still really appreciate you summarizing in your own words some of our discussions that we've had lately, and, and just kind of where we're headed, and what led us here, and that kind of thing.
Sure. Jill has a, a couple of word documents here that I'd just like to share. My intent tonight was really just to give you a, a bird's-eye view of what has been happening in the community and the state over the last couple of weeks. I'm sure Shelley has shared, and you're well aware, that there's been ongoing communication and partnership with the Health Department and all preschool districts since the beginning of March. And so, really, today is just to give you a little sense of what has led up to probably the recent decision made by Black River School District, and to provide you guys with an opportunity to ask any questions, if you'd like. So, Jill, how do I know what you're...
So, she has up the number of reported confirmed COVID cases, and it's your fun graph.
Perfect, so these are numbered, I'll just tell you when I'm ready to go with the number two here. I'll try not to bore you with tears, these are nine slides here, they're really not that complicated. But you'll see here where it says, "Select County." This is Wisconsin confirmed cases, and I should just start by saying that there's confirmed and probable. Probable is a much lower number. It's people who have been tested with antigen test rather than a confirmable PCR. So, we're just really gonna talk about confirmed cases. When you look to the, you'll see that it, that the graph goes, or that the bar graph goes from March all the way to the current time. This was last updated today, and Wisconsin, as of today, has three hundred and sixteen, seven hundred and fifty-eight confirmed cases. This gray area to the far right-hand side is what will be filling in. It's, it's indicating that, that there is some preliminary data there that's not yet been fully confirmed by the state. So, that just shows you, obviously, what's happened between September, or, and now, August, August. Yeah, November sixteenth. Okay, go to the second one, Jill.
We're there.
Okay. This is just another way to look at that in a, in a more longitudinal way. You can see that here is the cumulative three hundred and thirty-four, five hundred and sixty-two cases for the state of Wisconsin. This one is confirmed and probable, doesn't make a big difference. Obviously, there's been a significant increase since September. Now, go to the third one. I just wanted to compare and contrast Wisconsin to Jackson. So, Jill, you might even wanna flip back and forth a little, just once or twice between these two, and you'll see what a sudden and steep curve we had from probably the middle of October till now, really within two to three weeks' time. And Shelley, I mean, this is indicative of the conversations and what you all have been dealing with. Okay? This one does say confirmed and probable, but again, the probable number is so small, it really doesn't see the data. Okay, let's look at number four. Number four talks about the number of deaths, again, in Wisconsin. This is selecting for Wisconsin. Each one of these blue bars is a daily number, okay? And the orange down here is just including probable, so just kind of ignore that. But it does show you that there have been as high as fifty deaths in, in any given day in Wisconsin. The total there is two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four deaths since the start of the pandemic for Wisconsin. Okay, go to the fifth one, Jill. Okay, so, again, just another way to look at how steep the, the curve has become. Something we always look for in public health, because it, it tells, tells us about case rate and sudden changes. Go to number six. This is disease burden, which is nothing more than a fancy way of saying, kind of leveling the playing field and saying how many cases per hundred thousand. So, to try to equalize, you know, the differences between population in each county. And I started getting ready to talk to you guys the middle of last week, and that was Wednesday, November eleventh. And you can see the significant change that has already occurred between last week and this week, not even quite a full week, a full week's time, where, of course, we know that, that the cumulative number of cases has grown from the eastern side of the state to the western. But already, we got thrown into the highest, the five thousand to, to ten thousand per hundred thousand population case statistics here for disease burden in just a week's time. The other thing I would say is, it's important for you to understand that the state considers anything over one thousand cases per hundred thousand, so it's very, not the very lowest, but the second, the second tier, to be critical high, which simply means it can be difficult to get out ahead of. It's a concern, because it starts to play upon the resources of both local health department and the healthcare system. Okay, number seven. So, here talks a little bit, I guess I'd be amiss tonight if we didn't talk a little bit about the impact on the whole community. This is talking about hospital capacity and the impact as of late. Again, this was, now, this, this page was updated on the eleventh, last Wednesday. This updates every Wednesday. So, this is the most current reflective view we have of the statewide hospital capacity impact. But again, if you, you can see that the, the first, in the map of Wisconsin, it shows all of these areas are growing, except the eastern side is, is stable. And that's simply because they've been at a high rate for a month or more now. And again, the orange line to the right shows the number of hospitalized COVID patients. So, from, so say, November sixth till the tenth, a significant increase, just within the last week. Now, again, this is a week's out, a week out, and I will tell you that a lot has changed in the last week. I'm sure you're hearing it on the news. Locally, I had an update from the hospital today. You'll see that hospital beds here in use a week ago were almost at ninety percent. ICU beds were at ninety percent in use. Ventilator use is only at twenty-four percent. And that's interesting, because early on, we had a lot of focus on ventilator use. In March, April, May, June, we were very concerned about how many ventilator beds we had. And now, the treatment is a little bit different. We don't put people on ventilators right away, there's many other things that they do. But the eighty, ninety percent of hospital bed capacity is definitely concerning. I'll stop right here and just say that locally, because again, this is Wisconsin-wide locally, and in the western region. The western region goes from, uh, does not include Eau Claire, includes La Crosse and north. And the northeast, or the northwestern region includes Eau Claire. So, we're dealing with two separate preparedness regions. That area that includes Eau Claire is definitely in dire straits. They're reporting many, many, many of their hospitals at a hundred percent. Ours are more at about eighty percent, or a little more, between eighty and eighty-five this week. However, our hospital is struggling. They can take twenty-five admissions to their floor before they go into a surge capacity. And they've been very, basaling back and forth on that twenty-five number. Their ER has been pulled, they've been diverting patients to Tora and other smaller hospitals, you know, taking some of their lower, less critical patients and diverting them. They have had situations where they've had to hold on to patients in the ER, or have the helicopter divert them directly from a, a ambulance, a waiting ambulance. So, things are not good. Two weeks ago, we had one or two, maybe, COVID patients in the hospital. Now, about forty to forty-five percent of our patients are COVID, COVID-related admissions. And then, it's just in the last ten days to two weeks, I would say. In addition to that, you know, we talked about, we all have plans to be able to do more in the community, to serve more people. But the problem, like with, like with the schools, is that they're, they're being tasked, tasked with staffing issues. So, that today, as of six o'clock tonight, they had twenty-three staff who were out due to COVID-related, either they were close contacts or they're positive COVID cases themselves. That is causing a major crisis for everyone, of course. Okay, go to number eight, Jill. This just kind of tells you the same thing, what we're talking about. How many, kind of, gives you an idea of how many beds there are available. This is just for the western region. So, you'll see, like, from, let's see, that Buffalo down to Crawford for the western region, the biggest center being La Crosse here. And again, it's just showing you that about twenty percent of ICU beds were, were COVID-related. No, wait, I read that right, percentage of non-ICU, percentage of ICU. My mind is a little fried tonight, on a long day. It's showing you six hundred and forty-four total beds are available right now. A hundred and twenty-two of those are available in the western region, okay? And then, how many ICU beds? So, they have twenty-four COVID ICU patients and a hundred and nineteen total COVID patients in the western region alone, okay? And then, the last slide here, I just, that first part with the red trajectory, that's again, just to show you hospitalized patients by region. This is, this is just the western region, and it shows from October first now to, this actually goes till the sixteenth, the steep incline of admissions to hospitals, we definitely have seen that. The last bar graph down here, I included Mrs. Wisconsin as a whole, but it is very reflective of Jackson County as well. I, I think this is a question I'm asked a lot, especially from school folk. What's the breakdown of COVID confirmed cases in our region or in the state? And that just shows you what percentage. We started out having this group of twenty to twenty-nine being the very biggest, and I mean by a lot. It has backed off a little, and, and the other age groups have caught up. But in general, you know, really, the school-age group is about half what the college-age group is. College age and, and working, working early after.
Ellen, I'm not sure our slide is aligning. Can you go down one more? This has eight, is there? That's the last one. The last one we see says COVID-nineteen patients hospitalization by region?
Yeah, Jill, look at the last email I sent you. I added this, I added this. It was the next email, sorry, that was a late addition.
Once we start the meeting, she's not in her emails.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. Did you find it?
She's looking. She hasn't been told to restart yet, but she's looking.
Okay. It's just filling out the second half of page nine.
My email's sleepy, hold on.
While she's looking for that, I guess, I just wanna share with the group, Jill, you can pull that up if you find that. It's pretty self-explanatory. The only thing I really wanted to share tonight, other than to take questions, is to say, all along in our discussions with the schools, we, we as a team have, have thought that our number-one priority was to determine, you know, when would be closed school, or when would we go virtual, and it was all built upon staffing. That's not unlike, you know, what's happening at the nursing homes, their long-term care. Everything hinges on staffing. We have outbreaks everywhere. We have over forty outbreaks in work, work sites across the county right now. Both our nursing homes have outbreaks established in them, long-term care, as well as the system of living. However, when we started talking a little bit more at the end of last week, and we're feeling the effects of what you're seeing here on the screen, the question I posed was, it is, it's always hard to know when to go virtual, or when to make changes. There's always the fear of, how will we get back from there? And we don't know, or we don't feel necessarily, from all the tracing that staff have been doing in the school, thank you Elizabeth, and Shelley, and everybody else, that we can see a lot of students-to-students, or students-to-staff transmission. However, knowing that a large percentage of school-aged children who are positive are asymptomatic, I'm not sure we can rule that out. And we started to talk about what's the responsibility of the school to zoom out from looking at school and education, and think about the impact on the greater community. And I think that took us a little while to think about. That played some role, I'm sure, in the decision that was made last week. Shelley, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Did you find it?
Yes, she did, it's up right now, so now we see your bar graphs.
Yeah. I definitely am not one to wave a plague of, of, you know, of fear and overreaction. But I would say, we have seen a significant impact in the last two weeks, and I'm not sure that we see that slowing up. We definitely are tasked here at the Health Department. Many of you may or may not know that some counties have long sense given away, trying to follow up with close contact for people who are positive. We're still hanging on by our teeth barely. And we hope that we don't have to give that up, because when we do, we kind of lose control of slowing the spread in any way, shape, or form from what public health can do.
And so, I would just wanted to add to Ellen's comment that when she says that she's not one to raise a plague, since the very beginning, the three superintendents have kind of been more like, you know... since the very beginning, the three superintendents have kind of been more like, you know, tell us what, tell us what. And she was, so it's okay, it's gonna be okay, it's good. And so quite honestly, it certainly have never changed to any type of a panic. But last week when Ellen called me with a different type of message, that was the first time that I had heard from Ellen in a way that changed our focus or broadened our, our lens a little bit from just, can we function, can we not function? And what else should we be considering in this decision? And so what questions do board members have for Ellen? Okay, Patty's got a question? Hopefully she's loud enough to hear you.
I'll, I'll speak up. Hi Ellen.
Hi Patty.
Hi. So these are all concerning numbers. And I'm wondering, just could you talk a little bit about case fatality rate, just for information?
Is she asking about fatality?
Yes.
Case fatality rate.
So of course, the slide that I showed you was Wisconsin's fatality. If you could go back, I maybe would say to Jill, just kind of hover over that slide number four. And locally, you know, we don't have as large a population to really talk about big, big numbers. But what I will say specifically is that going into the last couple of weeks, we had, for the longest time, we had one and then we added a second death. Over the weekend, we added three more and we're sitting on one waiting confirmation. So the deaths that we have seen are mostly people who have some slight underlying condition. They've not been young people, but they've not been necessarily all, you know, 90 plus either. I worry when we look at those six people and know that we have outbreaks in our long-term care facilities, we worry that staff and students, especially asymptomatic folks, will carry that home to people with underlying health conditions. And we know that because of, you know, we worry about that because of the holiday situation. And I'm not saying anything new that you haven't heard from the governor. So we worry Patty, that, that fatality, that what we're seeing right now is just a little glimpse into what more could be gonna happen in the next few weeks.
So the, the Wisconsin case fatality rate is .8%, is that correct? I think I read that.
What she said, Sally?
She said that the Wisconsin case of fatality rate is .8%. Is that accurate?
I'd have to pull that up and look. I kind of look more at ours. And ours is like right around 2.5%.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from board members or more from?
Just want to say thank you for your work and stay healthy and well. Can't imagine when the workers that do this go down like what. Thank you so much.
So I will share with the group something that I did say to Ellen and talked briefly to the admin team about. So if we get into a position where we want to be helpful to our healthcare facility, do we offer childcare for their staff members so that with their kids home, that doesn't create an opportunity that they cannot go to work? And at the time, Ellen didn't think we were quite at that level. And of course, if their parents are isolated because they're ill, that's not helpful because they won't, the kids can't come then. But that is something that we discussed, that whether it be EMT services, whether it be hospital healthcare, whether it be, you know, the clinics, anything, that if we want to prioritize essential workers, that certainly would be one thing that the school could do to try to help the community cause. Would any board members have concerns about us offering that if, if it would deem to be helpful?
So you're saying all age kids, not the school age?
School age, we would, yeah, school age. Because we're creating that problem, right?
Shelley, can I just share one other thing? And that is beyond saying, letting the board know, you know, just how wonderful, in a horrible time, it's been to have great partners, not only within this school district, but with our other two. I think we are far, far way ahead of many other districts as far as relationship building. And it's, these are not easy decisions. We haven't always decided to, we've decided together. We haven't always landed on the exact same decision for each district. But I think it's been a really great process and I would expect that it will continue. That's the main thing, I guess, I really wanted, wanted to say. I, I don't think we can understate that. I hear so often from my peers every day of struggles and power and control. And that is just not what is happening here. So these are hard decisions. I, the one other thing I would say, you kind of touched on it in your announcement, Shelley, when you made your announcement on Friday about virtual, going virtual on the 30th. And that is to say, it's hard to know. The biggest, you know, kind of worry is, once we do this, when can we go backwards? And as Shelley has said, we will take that kind of as it comes. No one has a crystal ball. There is epidemiologic evidence that suggests that once you come back out of a outbreak kind of situation, and let's just assume that high-risk activity of the holidays, whether it's Thanksgiving or Christmas, that you put two 14-day quarantine periods back to back and then you return to normalcy. And so those are things that I've shared. I think that we'll just have to look and see where things are at when we get to the end of December, as Shelley has said. And I wish we knew exactly, but what we don't want to do is have it revolve indoors. We don't want to be in and out and in and out. I think that, from my personal opinion, that's extremely disruptive to families and daycare and childcare and teachers. And we, we don't need to put undue stress on people. So sort of a moderate midterm plan would be my recommendation. And I know Shelley knows that, so stay tuned.
And I would just echo that from my colleagues as well. I hear a very argumentative relationship with public health. And I do appreciate there are times when I'm like, Ellen, just tell us what to do because this is hard. And, and they're, you know, but it's always been a conversation and the pros and cons. And what would you like to do? Well, let's talk about that. How could we mitigate more and all of those things? So I agree, the partnership has been very helpful.
I think we're very fortunate. We've been able to stay in as long as we are.
I agree. When I was making phone calls on Friday night, I had one parent that just let us say, you guys have made a valiant effort. Thank you for that. We'll be ready when you're ready. And so that's, that's great. Great. Any other questions for Ellen? Will we have her? I'm gonna ask her next. So Ellen, thank you very much. As you're still in your office, you probably have other things you'd like to do this evening. We did have Elizabeth join us as well. Elizabeth, was there anything you wanted to add to that conversation? Or any local flavor you wanted to add or whatever?
Nope, other than I really appreciate our relationship with public health too. I also hear similar things from my nursing colleagues in our region that it's not always a good relationship. So I appreciate all of them over there. They're working all hours of the day and night and weekends. And from the timing when I get texts from them, I know that. So yeah, they're doing a phenomenal job.
And Elizabeth, we know you're doing that same thing. You're working day and night and weekends as well. So we appreciate your efforts too.
Could you hear that, Elizabeth?
It is, yeah, thank you.
It was all good. It was sunshine and appreciation and knowing that you're working amazing amounts of hours and you just really just keep going and we really appreciate it.
Stay safe.
All right. Thanks so much for joining us. Thanks for joining us, ladies. Any other on the COVID updates that you would like to talk about?
How in the world do people that teach fire and music, all this stuff, what do they do?
So we were just talking about that with the elementary today, what they would like to do. Because there are some families that are doing the virtual that have asked for some more enrichment opportunities. And so they are going to, in the afternoon, like there will be a second grade music lesson. And we thought particularly in December, how fun to do like a great big group sing-along. And you know, so anybody that wants to join in will be able to, there'll be like a, so each grade level will have a slot for those specials. Those people might be some of the people also helping to man the daycare during a portion of the day. But they would also be doing some optional virtual sessions for families that want to participate. Any other COVID-related questions? All right, we'll keep you in the loop.
Shelley, just a reminder so the board members can hear online if everybody could speak up. So Amy and Scott can hear what's going on.
I just wanted to add, there was a question about what are our neighboring schools doing? And C-Support has added a dashboard to their site that all of our schools are entering in, I believe, at least once a week, what their current situation is, what kind of services they're doing. And we are definitely in the minority of providing face-to-face. But as every week that changes, but you can go look at that site all the time. I, I think your, your, the superintendents are the ones entering that information, is that correct?
I have not been asked to enter yet, but I heard that they were going to do that, so I.
Blackboard's included in that now, so I assumed that.
Must have been from a previous thing.
But what we're doing. But that's, I think that's about it, hoping to be interested in our neighboring schools.
And, and so when we talk about neighboring, Melrose Mendoza, they had like two, three cases. When they get one case, they shut down for like two, three days and then they were back. And so he's like, well, don't you shut for, do you shut for a couple of days with a case? Oh my God, no, we had 10 cases over the week. So the different systems are just responding in different ways. And I would say that one's not right and everyone else is wrong. It is everyone doing the best that they can. So right now, Melrose Mendoza does not have a lot of staff out and so they are not scheduling to close right now. And that's fine. I mean, I don't feel like the county has to move in solidarity if they can't stay open. By all means, they should, and knowing that there might be a time when the roles are reversed, so. All right, so those were all my jump around ones. I think we could go on to 7.1 if that's okay.
All right, so unfortunately, a lot of our middle school math teachers were quarantined or some of them were ill, and so they asked me to speak on their behalf tonight. So I know we're running kind of long, so I will try to zip through this, but please do ask questions as we go. So Focus on Purpose, focus tonight is middle school math. And so I'm gonna go to the next one, Jill. These are the math teachers at the middle school with the additional teacher at each grade level that we added because of the large numbers there and wanting to cohort. We have a wonderful situation where we have two full-time math teachers at each grade level. We have not had that for a very long time. Most recently, we've had someone who teaches some math during the day and something else. Sometimes we've had a couple at a grade level that might teach a little math and a little something else. And so the focus on math and the ability to have a partner in that work has been wonderful. So you can see those folks listed there. So these are just the things we're gonna quickly go through in the slides, share a little bit about the past work of middle school teachers in math, currently what they're doing. Got some pictures in there for you and then we'll talk about some next steps. So just to kind of remind you, several years ago, there was a crop of middle school teachers that participated in the math grant. Of the people currently teaching math that were able to engage in the math grant, we only have two that were in for a longer amount of time and then three, one joined kind of at the tail end. And so with six teachers of math, we have less than half that were able to engage in that learning. And so the structure of the PLCs is very important to carrying some of that learning continued to be forward with the rest of the team. Then you can see, just reminding you when we adopted resources, because I know it's hard to keep all those timelines straight. And so last year, we completed our second year with the Carnegie Learning Resources. And so with that, we have invested in a coach directly from that resource company. Vicky Wood has joined us the last couple of years to help support our teachers in their implementation and does some coaching, has done some coaching in the classrooms. So then that brings us kind of to our current work. And so these are the kind of commitments that the teachers have made to ensure that effective use of the resources. Off to the right side there is from the state of Wisconsin, their overall vision for mathematical education in the state. And you can kind of see that our work very much mirrors and is in alignment with that. But along the left-hand side, those are all things that the teachers, in collaboration with Vicky Wood, last year kind of put into place as we have added new teachers to math. I'm wanting to kind of say here are all the things we stand for in middle school math. And so I won't read through all of those for you, but you probably remember in the elementary presentation last month, they talked a lot about how important it is to get students to talk about the math, to explain their reasoning behind why they did math the way they did it, to really dive deeply into that, to solidify their understanding. And so that is just as important at the middle school level as well. And that is why there's so much in here and on the next slide that talks so much about the functionality of the classroom and how are we sharing the space and listening to each other and all of those kinds of things. Being able to explain one's reasoning and paraphrase the reasoning of someone else is really to solidify that deeper understanding. And then here is the commitments they've made around establishing that classroom that's leading towards more collaboration and engagement. And so it's really about the students doing that math work and then talking about it so that it can be solidified. And then the teacher is able to assess their understanding as well as kind of walk them through things that maybe need to be different. And so it is challenging to implement math like this in the COVID environment where group work is somewhat frowned upon. And so we've really had to be strategic about that. Where when, because of that collective 15 minutes that you're not supposed to be with another person, they do some different groupings throughout the class period. They really watch the time. But they don't want to lose that good learning opportunity. And so they've been very strategic, which I appreciate their problem solving there as well. One of the other, oh, sorry. No, no, that's okay. I was just gonna say, but I can say it as you look at these pictures. One of the other things that the teachers have appreciated, especially those that went through the math grant work as they brought new teachers on board, a lot of the best practices that they learned throughout that grant, if discussion practices and collaboration and problem solving is built into the resource. And so really, that's why we've continued to bring Vicky Wood back to help support teachers that are joining our math curriculum, to really implement that fidelity at a high level. So here are some sixth graders that are digging into some of that math work. And you can see that they are doing some group work. You can kind of see how some of them have like flipped around. So they might use their front partners for one math talking activity and then they might use their behind them partners for another one, just to kind of keep their contacts limited, I guess. But definitely the high level of engagement as they are digging deeply into the math that they're doing. And then just continued work at the middle school. So twice a week, the partner teachers have a grade level PLC. So the people that teach sixth grade math together, they meet twice a week and they plan together. They look at common assessments together to see how students are doing, to really make data-based decisions. That's really a strength of having two teachers at each level that they're able to do that together as opposed to being kind of figuring it out on your own. So that's been a great strength this year. And then every Friday, they meet cross-grade level six through eight, all the math teachers, really focusing on best practices, looking at the pacing. And then Mathia was on an earlier slide as well, but that's the digital side of the resource where students are able to, they take an assessment early on and then they're able to get, whether it's more support and more gap-filling kind of practice or more enrichment. And so they look at that as well.
Uh, sorry, I was touching, I touched it.
She's like, come on, keep moving. You don't have to pick up the pace, right?
So just to kind of, this is a lot of things that we've talked about already. But continuing to work with Vicky Wood from Carnegie, so we've had her already come in once so far this year. Luckily for us, she lives in Iowa, so she can drive to us because she doesn't have to get on a plane, so that was nice. Just there is a lot of value in her being in our classrooms. And so with the additional, with the instructional coaching support that is now at the middle school, Nicole Sullivan joining that team, she went with Vicky as she did her classroom visits. And she is continuing that work. That's the beautiful thing about having her there all the time. The things that they talk about with Vicky, now she is coming back and doing lots of smaller coaching cycles around that work till we bring Vicky back in January, February. So that's wonderful.
And she lives here, so it's even better, right?
Absolutely. She is a resident. And so someday we will hopefully be able to no, not no longer have Vicky. She's great. But it'd be nice to be able to provide all of that in-house. But she has a lot of expertise and Nicole is still learning that resource, so we are doing a little bit of pairing right now. So their continued work, continuing to look at the data that's coming back on the guarantees that they've established and really having some intentional grouping of students, their own interventions. And we'll look at some of the data a little bit later tonight that that's definitely needed. And so continued work there. As we slowly move towards that standards-based grading approach, talking about what that looks like in math over time. And then they've had heavy lifting to do this year with figuring out virtual learning and what that looks like with group work in math, as you can imagine. And so they're, the nice part about Carnegie is that they are doing so much to help teachers. Every lesson comes with, from Made by Carnegie, a Google slideshow presentation that Carnegie puts together for the teachers. So that's not a step that they have to do. They can tweak it and make it their own. But they don't have to create all those slides for the students. And so that's really been a benefit, just one that comes to mind in the virtual learning, as well as a lot of other things too, so. So that's a quick update from the middle school math. Any questions or discussion?
I predict, so Carnegie is the methodology that's the method of teaching or the way we teach.
I predict, so Carnegie is the methodology that's the method of teaching or the way we teach.
Yeah, so it's the resource and so it's our textbook and it has a workbook that goes with it. And so it definitely does have the, um, guidance for a teacher on here's how you would go about teaching this, if that's what you're asking.
Isn't it based on, um, uh, research from the Carnegie Foundation, right? And so that's the naming or not necessarily?
I'm not really sure where I, apologize, I don't know, but I could look that up for you if you would want to know where we landed on, but. Sure.
More terms, right?
Sure, yeah, so it's just the name of the textbook, like our, um, ELA textbook at the elementary is Ready Gen. And our, I don't know why they have these fancy names, but at the middle school is my perspective, so, I don't know, but, but it definitely is, um, if you remember when we chose that one, it was one of the most highly rated on ed reports where they look at standard alignment and use of best practices and teaching throughout the resource and usability for students and teachers, so, good question. Alright, anything else?
Yep, so you will see, um, I believe you were made aware of the. Yes, the math teacher at the high school and then ironically, a math teacher with some experience. Um, has a husband who was transferred to Fort McCoy and was looking for a teaching job mid-year, that was, uh, woo, that was pretty exciting. And so, um, we were thrilled to be able to fill that spot mid-year as well as at Forest Street, to be able to fill that special education position, um, mid-year with people who had been relocating anyway, so that was exciting for us.
Like a miracle.
Alright, so, um, sometimes when we get to the standard item, I'll just share some updates with you. Um, but tonight I wanted to share some, um, data with you, our fall data snapshot for this year, um, so far. Um, and so within there will be kind of wrapped in some of our action steps and things that we're working on as well. So to give you an idea of the data that we're going to take a look at, um, we're gonna look K five at the, at some literacy data. Um, this is a new tool, um, well, not new, new to us, um, in that we haven't used it as widespread in the past, but a lot of systems do use it. DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicator of Basic Early Literacy Skills. Um, and so that is, uh, they're a series of short tests that are given to students one-on-one by a teacher. And they are, it is normative data, but it is specific to the foundational skills of reading. Um, and so we have added that as a measure because we know, as we've shared with the board, that we've recognized some gaps in our foundational skill, um, acquisition of students and so wanting to get a kind of a laser-like focus on what those specific holes are to fill so that we can be responsive. Um, and then second through eighth are, um, I Ready data and then we did that for K through eighth, um, for math. And so literacy, we decided, um, for our youngest students that the most actionable data was going to come from that DIBELS. And so, um, just with them all coming back after such a long closure, um, and so many, uh, things at the beginning of the year, we decided to just start that at second grade for literacy because the DIBELS was going to be a lot of data to respond to already. And so, um, that was our decision-making there. So I will share, um, you probably looked at this because it was in the packet, but out of the gate, um, we recognize that our data is not super lovely, but it is ours and it is something that we are continually working to, um, combat and so we'll examine that as we go through. Well, I'm sorry, doesn't look like that on my slide. Oh, Lord, I'm sorry about that. I don't know if there's any more that look like that, that's really embarrassing. Alright, so, throw me for a loop, Mary Jo. So you can see the key across the bottom there, um, those are kind of color systems that we're kind of used to looking at the board level. That intensive support, uh, the way the DIBELS data breaks down, um, says that they are more than one year behind. Yellow, that need of strategic support, that they are a year behind, um, and then that core support, the green, um, and then core plus support. Um, those are both saying that those students would get their needs met in core instruction, um, just as a frame of reference. And so as you can see there, we know that we definitely see some data needs at our youngest levels. Um, definitely some gaps to fill there and we'll talk more about some of those next steps as we go through. Um, but seeing the, um, I guess just a couple of quick pieces to remind you about when we talk about resource adoption and some of the things that we've previously done in response to this data that has been ours for a while. Um, knowing that last year was the first year that we, for the entire school year, implemented the CKLA resources, uh, K one and two. And those are, have that heavy phonics focus. And so I like to believe that the, some of the movement of less red, um, and more green and blue at the third grade level is the response of second grade being able to, um, pass on those kids that had a year of CKLA. Um, we had a lot of second grade teachers that piloted the year before that, so we had probably the most teacher familiarity with the resource going into last school year. And so, um, it's always hard to draw those conclusions, but I'm a little hopeful in seeing that data. Um, our third, fourth and fifth grade last school year also, um, went through a lot of training in foundational skills, well, second, third, fourth and fifth, but, um, third, fourth and fifth didn't have a new resource around foundational skills, they just had a lot of training and then ran a lot of small group support to try to close gaps in those foundational skill areas. And so, um, we definitely see some of the effects hopefully of that there as well. So then, um, now switching to our computer-based assessment of the I Ready, this is our second through fifth grade and I kind of did the same format where you get an overall picture and then a breakdown by grade levels. And so the top one shows us it divided into three groups. Um, as you can see there, the at-risk need of tier three is the red and then tier two and then the green is the, would be the on-level students. Um, and so as you'll see throughout, our continual, we're continually striving to have the needs of eighty to eighty-five percent of our students have their needs met in core instruction. That would be that we would have most, we would have eighty to eighty-five percent in that green area. And so right now we kind of have the reverse going on and so that is why we have made such a concerted effort to choose new resources, to provide such intense training. Um, and we'll keep talking about some of the other things that we are additionally doing as well. I will also share on the right side where it has the skills listed, um, I did keep that in there for you because I do think that's important. This assessment, um, you know, it's one snapshot in time, but the way that it is organized, it gives the feedback for, um, by those skill areas, the top one being the one that's in most critical need. And so you can kind of see that phonological awareness and phonics are those two skill areas that we, um, still have work to do in. And they advise through the research of their assessment that those are the skills that need to be tackled first because all the others build on that, which we would kind of understand the way reading works.
I have a silly question.
Absolutely.
Phonological awareness and phonics, what's the difference?
No, not a silly question at all, so phonological awareness is more like that phonemic awareness, so being able to segment sounds and blend sounds and kind of do like the working with how the sounds work together versus phonics is being able to identify the sounds, different kind of clusters and vowel and letter combinations. And so one is more like actions, I guess, and then the other is the identification of those different combinations. I hope a literacy coach is not listening or, uh, or reading specialist, because I don't know if that's the textbook way to explain it, but that would be my understanding. So then here's the breakdown by grade level, um, and again there you can kind of see the top one is the three levels and then this year the company has added a five-level breakout, which I appreciate because then we can see kind of that advanced as well as, um, a breakout of our struggling students and who is the most struggling. Um, and we probably shared this last year when we moved to this, um, tool, but within the actual system, you can click on those bars and see who those kids are and what specific skills they need to work on. Um, this tool has a lot of great guidance for us there. Um, one of the things that we can see in this data, kind of throughout the grade levels, we have a large crop of students that are in that yellow, that one late grade level behind, um, and we have talked a fair amount at the grade levels that that, those are attainable students within our core instruction. There's a couple of things I'll talk about that we're doing a little differently this year to really try to grab those kids and bring them up to grade level. So then this is our middle school, um, overall data, you can see that the, um, the breakdowns on the top and bottom. Can see the skill order is the same, um, the way that the phonological awareness is, although there it shows, everybody's got phonological awareness down. Um, to be honest, there, when we dig farther into the data, we have found that a lot of our students that are special education at the middle school still have a lot of gaps in phonemic awareness and phonics. And so, um, we'll talk a little bit about some of the pieces that we're going after to get to some of that. If you want to go to the grade level, Joe? So, to be honest, the middle school percentages of students that are farther behind are more concerning than at the elementary. Um, and that is not something that we take lightly by any stretch. Um, when we dig deeply into this data, we see that of those, you know, we're looking at like half the grade level that, or over half the grade level. Um, and so of those kids, their largest area of deficit is vocabulary. And so when we think about that, um, and what that means for students, we've got, which varies grade level to grade level, but about forty to sixty percent of students that vocabulary is their number one area of concern. And so they have some substantial gaps in word knowledge, making it harder for them to read for meaning. Um, they just don't have that depth of vocabulary, um, behind them, which we do know is something that, um, is common with students that come from families of poverty, um, but that's still something that we want to work hard on. And so we've talked at the middle school level, um, in the upcoming professional development, we'll be digging even deeper into it, taking a real hard look at our current practices of vocabulary and making some changes. Our, um, kind of rote way of looking at vocabulary and thinking about looking up words and writing down definitions is not an effective way to acquire, um, vocabulary. And so we've really talked about, um, strategies for teachers to shift gears, but it's not necessarily about covering the twenty-five words that might be content words within this chapter, um, but really giving them some strategies to focus on fewer words, but really add them to the vocabulary because it's not about memorization, it's really, if we're going to combat some of this and allow them to be able to, or enable them, I should say, to be able to read for meaning, um, they need to really add those words to their working vocabulary. And so, um, the research for our own vocabulary is strong, that we need to have support in the content areas. And so it is great that the whole building can work on this together because it's just as important in science and social studies and tech ed and math. Um, and so it's really working hard on those strategies, um, so that we are adding that to student vocabulary for sure.
Yeah, could you look, I'm sorry, let's move the other way, just, yeah, that, that way, the one before. One more, okay, there we go. So up at the top there, when we're looking at comprehension and comprehension of international text, those ones seem to have, initially when you're saying most of that, we have to do them with the vocabulary.
Right, if we can, if we can help them with a, a deeper level of vocabulary acquisition, that will help them with their comprehension. Because when you get to those higher content words, you can, um, maybe sound out what they say, but if you've not ever seen that word before, be able to put it in context, you won't know what it means and so that will affect that comprehension greatly. No, absolutely. So then I wanted to give you a bit of a perspective on how was our data this year compared to our fall data from last year? Just because I think that, um, we are certainly wondering about our school closure and, you know, our, all of those kinds of things and how is that affecting our data and so, um, we are somewhat consistent to last fall. Um, we definitely have more students in need of intervention, um, not, I guess for when we shared these slides, um, with teachers, they were like, oh, well, it's not as drastic as we thought it might be, like way more kids in the red because of our school closure. Um, but it's still data that we want to react to and respond to.
Kind of what we hear from the teachers, that those kids that are willing to dig in and be successful certainly have the tools to be able to do it. With them not physically in front of us, it's so much more difficult to engage those that aren't as motivated. And so, again, it's good to see that the kids who want to be successful have the tools to be able to do it. Um, but obviously it's the kids that, um, need that additional structure and support that we're not able to provide, so.
So then I'll just go through, if you want to go to the next one, Joe, um, just some general, um, kind of how are we, what are we doing about this data? And this definitely was work that we started even before looking at this data, but just to quickly share. So, um, as you know, K five, we did invest in, uh, tier one or core area resources, um, at the end of last school year. And so it's our first year of implementation, so we're not, not necessarily going to see any of that reflected, well, for sure, we're not going to see any of that reflected in that fall data for sure. Um, we do look forward to when we will see that, knowing that implementation takes time, but we are working hard on the continued support of teachers, um, with that data. And so, or with, um, those new resources, excuse me, and so we've had several opportunities for professional development within those new resources. Um, we've had Zoom calls with reps from the different resources just to check in, see how things are going, answer questions. Um, and then our coaches have been very helpful as well, um, in implementation support. Then K five, some very specific actions in those foundational skills. Um, training for all of our teachers happened very intentionally last spring, um, last school year, but then also last spring when we had some professional development time at the end of the year. Um, and then to piggyback off of that or extend it, um, we've now done training with a, a lot of our instructional aides at the K five level, so then they can also be providing one-on-one support with that DIBELS data because it's very specific discreet skills. Then there are very specific discreet, um, interventions that can happen, um, one-on-one or one-on-two. Um, and so that has started happening at Forest Street and Red Creek, uh, with our instructional aides, which is wonderful. Um, then we have also, um, trained all of our interventionists at the elementary level and, uh, now, uh, well, by the time we're done with this month or maybe next month, we'll have fifteen teachers trained in Orton-Gillingham. And so I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it is a multi-sensory approach to phonics instruction. Um, and it has the largest research results for, uh, being successful for students that have learning challenges and so, and language deficits. And so, um, knowing that vocabulary deficits is certainly something that our students, um, experience as well as other, uh, language issues, um, this has been a helpful, um, thing to invest in. And so, uh, that multi-sensory approach is not only fun for kids, but it is very, um, it really works well. And so that has been something we've toyed around with the idea for a long time, it is expensive training. Um, but we decided to allocate Title One, some Title One funds to help pay for some of that training this year and, um, some classroom teachers, some special education teachers and some interventionists, um, going through that and then coming back and sharing some of that with their team. Um, the nice part about that is it is a, um, a way to go about teaching and so you can overlay that on any resource. And so they're taking their high-quality resources that they have and saying, oh, if we just add this, it's going to be even better. And so that's been great as well. Um, Forest Street, uh, when they share their kind of building goals for the year with you eventually, um, they are, because of their data, are taking a very concerted effort on phonemic awareness. And so really, they've taken a few of those DIBELS assessments and they're tracking that progress on a very regular basis, doing some of those tests, um, as kind of formative assessments and being responsive and, um, taking a look at that data. And then the last thing I'll share about the elementaries, um, is a tier one intervention approach. And so, um, when you looked at some of the larger numbers of students that we have that are in need of intervention, um, we can't possibly do that in a small group situation. And so, um, we have been working with someone from the, uh, Wisconsin RTI Center, um, to help us with our kind of inverted triangle. As I said before, that we should be getting our eighty percent of our students, they should be getting their needs met in core instruction, we have the flip of that. And so we have reached out to say, what should we be doing differently? And they have said, you know, you're doing all the right things, you're getting high-quality resources in the hands of teachers, you are building capacity in foundational skills, um, reading skills in your teachers as well. Um, and then this was something else that they said has been, um, very successful in other districts, to take some of that core time and looking at the needs of your students and what you might pull and do three small groups worth of stuff, doing that for that large chunk of students. And so they call it a tier one intervention. And so we have had some of that happening in pockets, but we are being more intentional about a PLC, figuring out what that would be, planning it together, doing it for two weeks, looking at those results, um, and then coming back together, so. Similar things at the middle school level, um, in some regard, they have new resources as well and so that ongoing support there. The addition of the full-time instructional coach at the middle school level has been fantastic. Um, she's been able to be in classrooms, supporting teachers, um, with implementation of resources as well as just best practices. She's been working with, um, all the instructional aides there to also train them, not only on some one-on-one kind of intervention strength. She's been working with, um, all the instructional aids there to also train them, not only on some one-on-one kind of intervention strategies. But also, when you're working with students, group of students, how can you help them break down text, how can you help them, just some kind of basic reading, um. Strategic strategies as well, um. And then we're also working with the special education teachers at the middle school on some specific phonics and phonemic awareness programs, we've given them some training. On a, a couple of different programs right before the closure, and so bringing that back around and starting that up again, um, this fall. To get that off the ground, so be- because the data is showing us that that is the need of our special education students being responsive to that. And then I already talked about the vocabulary. Alright, we're gonna switch gears to math, and I'll try to keep going quickly. Um, so again, our math data, um, we have a large crop of students in the K one area that are in the yellow. Um, that one grade level behind, and so, we definitely have work to do with them, but it is attainable.
And remember that kindergarten would not show up as one grade level behind, and so I just wanna remember, remind everyone that just because there's not as much red. It's not a possibility at the kindergarten level.
Right, thank you.
And I'm trying to, you know, make it worse. Wanna make sure everyone's accurate.
For sure, so when we look at that grade, uh, we can go to the next one, Jill, that breakdown by grade level. You're right, there, it's not that there might not be some kids that should live in the red, but they, that they don't measure it that way at the kindergarten level. So, um, the, the standards or the skills that they work on there, um, counting, identifying numbers, um, so there's a whole. Cardinal cardinality, I think is the actual word, um, strand where they talk about number order and.
Mercy is a big.
Mm-hmm, yep, so if you go back, um, the number and operations thread, um, is all of those, number identification. But then they do get into simple addition, simple subtraction, um, number order, some of those kinds of things, I mean, very simple at the kindergarten level. Um, and first grade level, I don't know for sure all those standards by heart, to be honest, but. Geometry is very basic shape recognition and, um, some of those pieces. By first grade, they do get into a little bit of money, like just recognizing coins and, you know, or values and those kinds of things, but it's pretty simplistic. Um, but then, uh, I think, I don't know if it's first grade or second grade, they get into place value. Um, I think ten num- tens in first and second, so, I don't know how much.
There's a lot of graphs and.
Patterns and some of that in kindergarten. Well, counting, like counting to a hundred by the end of kindergarten. Yep, yeah. Yeah, and if you'd wanna know some of the specifics of those, um, I could share those with you. So that's kind of the breakdown by grade level there. Definitely some gaps to close, um, and then we get into six or seven, or second through fifth, excuse me. And I meant to point out on the other chart, you'll see a pattern that the number and operations strand that runs throughout. Um, that is the weaker area, I guess, across all of our data, um, which again, kind of points us back to, um. That foundational skills of math. Honestly, it, uh, as we dig into the data further, there's, our students are, especially as we get up in the grades and the math starts to get harder. They are losing some of that automaticity and some of that fluency, and so, um, for a long time, we had a specific fluency time built into math. And as schedules and things have shifted and squeezed, some of the grade levels had, um, gotten away from that, and with this data, they've said, oh, we gotta put that back in, and so. Balance, balance, balance is always what we're striving for, and so, that's definitely something that we've revisited, um, at the elementary level. So that is the breakdown by grade level. Again, we're not comparing, um, these aren't cohorts of students, but, um, we are moving more students to the green, a little bit over time. And more, um, but we're also not seeing the closing of the gaps in the red as we need to, so definitely more work to do. Then our middle school data, again, it's fairly consistent with our ELA data, we have far more students, um. At risk of intervention than we need to have, so that continued work. Which is a big piece of at the middle school level, is why Mathia is so important, you probably saw that on one of the slides, that commitment to ninety minutes a week. Because that is truly that differentiation for students, where they're getting a lot of practice in the skill gaps that they have, and so. Um, in our first couple of years of implementation, that was hard for teachers to find the time for, um, as they were trying to do their best with direct instruction and the. Classroom instruction, that they weren't always making time for that, and our coaches pushed us hard to say, you're not gonna close these gaps if you don't give them that time. Built right into the core, and so that's kind of that tier one intervention approach again, that we have to build in time to do that, or. Students will continue to have those holes, and that will continue to affect their overall achievement. And so that is going much better this year, and they actually have a, a chart within their PLC meetings that they hold each other accountable pretty regularly to say. How much minutes did you have for Mathia this week, and that was a suggestion by the coach last year, and so we said, we're gonna do that this year, just so that we can keep everybody on. Cause it's easy to let some of those things fall away. So then that is the comparative, um, data, again, just to kind of see, how are we compared to last year at this time? And I think, you know, one of the things, it's, um, disappointing that we're, we weren't able to see some of the effects of the hard work from last year. Um, we know that this fall data is always measuring some summer loss, and then thinking about, probably measuring some. Maybe a little bit of loss from during the closure, um, but we are, um, it'll be exciting to see what winter data brings, and now we're hoping that we can definitely see some. Um, evidence of our efforts, I guess. So, what are we doing, um, to respond to this data in the math world? Um, again, uh, at the K five level, the teachers that were here last month shared how we, um, did update the materials. Um, still the same material, but just that updated copyright that has more of those math practices built in to shake some of the guesswork out. Um, I, I already shared that increased focus on automaticity and fluency, making sure that's prioritized time within the elementary classrooms. Um, and then additional tier three intervention support in math, added at Forest Street this year, that's not something that we've. Um, had that tier three support in math before with an interventionist, um, delivering math programming. Um, we've done a lot of tier two kinds of things for math, but not ever tier three, and so wanting to jump on that. Student need as quick as possible, and so that's a new addition this year. Middle school, um, talked a lot already about the resources and our support from Vicky Wood. Um, but then also the small groups and the Mathia, um, as well. Um, and then tier three support, um, at the middle school level with our, um. Trying to be responsive to our COVID protocols, we're not able to pull as many intervention groups together at the middle school level, and so. Finding time for math has been difficult, but it's something we continue to problem solve. Um, and then again, Nicole's support there, and that vocabulary will help us in math as well, so. And then just some overall things, is kind of all the intertwined work that really supports student achievement, um. But continuing to support our implementation of core resources, um, really kind of having that. Articulation of what fidelity of implementing those resources looks like. Um, and then really prioritizing that planning within the PLC. And I'll be honest, that this year, as people have a lot of other things on their plate, it's easy for that to feel like, I don't have time to meet with a group, I need to do my own things. But continuing to work with those leaders to really talk hard about how important it is that we plan together the big things, and then. You know, you can figure out how you wanna deliver it as best in your classroom, but taking the time to share those strategies within the team is super important. Um, and that high-quality instruction, uh, that's really where those things are talked about, is in the PLC, as well as our professional development, like our self-efficacy. And some of those other pieces, um, and then continuing to do our, continuing to work on our RTI systems or. MLSS systems to make sure that we have support at every level.
That's a lot of initials, could you RTI?
Sure, sorry, sorry, um, RTI response intervention, the state's kind of renamed it as multi-level, level systems of support. Um, but making sure that we have those in place in ELA and math, where we're looking at data and saying these students are. Not responding to the core instruction, so they need some selected intervention support at a tier two level, that might happen a couple of times a week by. Various amount of staff members, and then if that's not working, and looking at that data and saying they need more intensive support, perhaps delivered by an interventionist. Or some kind of a specialist, and then really tracking that data as well, so. Absolutely, I know that was a lot of stuff, but any questions or comments, discussion? Can't wait for the day when I can stand up here and tell you, and look how it's moved, so someday we're gonna get there.
So this is for the added, um, agenda item that I had on, Mr. Chambers and Mr. Solheim are gonna chime in shortly. Um, I did put it in the packet, I think, in eight point two, yeah, here we go. So if you recall this summer, when we talked about moving our schedule from the, um. Previous block A B day schedule to the three-by-five, we talked about, um, the potential need to readjust our graduation credit requirement. If you recall, we shared at that time that, um, the, our high school had one of the highest, uh, credit requirements. And so our counselors, as kids have transferred in from other districts, they've had to do some kind of an alignment game and, and try to figure out what's, um. Likenesses we can draw, and make sure that kids that come from other systems aren't automatically at a setback, so. Basically, what we wanted to boil down for you is, could you scroll up just a little bit, there we go, that middle area, and so what we described to you this summer was. There's kind of that sweet spot between how many credits a kid would earn if they passed every single class, all four years of high school. And how many they needed to have in order to graduate, and so our previous was thirty-two credits to twenty-eight credits required for graduation. That was our previous, and so that was, uh, was created, oh. I shouldn't have put those second two bullets on there, I apologize, the reason this wasn't on the agenda earlier is the high school counselors and the high school administrators. Finally had a chance to pull this stuff together and make a recommendation, which is why we're not asking you to vote on it, but want you to be aware and have some conversation. So that we can move forward in a moment, so what the current, um, criteria is, is there is a fifteen and a half credits that are required by the state. Along with the US citizenship set, uh, test, and then we backfill the rest of it with, um. Uh, additional credits, whether they are electives or, um, core area courses that, um, are not the required classes. And so what we are recommending is that there are thirty credits possible, if they pass one hundred percent of their classes in our three-by-five. And we would recommend twenty-six credits required for graduation, which would be the fifteen and a half plus the ten and a half, um, electives. I apologize, those two bullets shouldn't be up on that top section. Um, Mr. Chambers or Mr. Solheim, did you have, uh, any additional information you wanted to share about that, or conversations at the high school at this time?
Yes, for sure, um, the, uh, one other thing to mention is that if a, a student takes a TA. In their senior year or work-based learning course that, uh, spans more than one or two periods. They still would be passing all of their classes, but because those don't carry the same number of credits per course. Uh, a TA is a quarter credit rather than a half credit, and, uh, work-based learning is a, a, a maximum of one credit. But they may fill up three or four blocks, uh, so they, they could still pass all of their classes, yet still not. Attain that thirty or, right now, the thirty-two credit, so.
Thank you.
Um, so that, just a clarification of why there's that gap there, so. But it would be this, moving, uh, again, if we, if we were to, uh, a- as we talked when we went to the three-by-five. We would need to make that adjustment, um, to the number of elective credits a student would be required to earn. Because they simply wouldn't have as many slots in their, in their schedule, if you remember, a, a four-by-four block. Students take sixteen courses per year, whereas a three-by-five, they take fifteen courses per year, so. Uh, it's, it's not, not possible to, to reach the thirty-two credits or the twenty-eight, and so that ratio of. Twenty-eight to thirty-two would be the same as the thirty credits to the twenty-six.
Thank you, and then if you would scroll, Jill, um, they put together some data for the current senior year, so you wanna talk us through that, or would you like me to?
Sure, I can, I, I can do that, so these, uh, courses, uh, the student numbers on the left are the, uh, number of students. As of the end of last school year, so they were juniors last year, class of twenty-twenty-one, there were fifty-four students who had earned. A twenty-four credit, uh, twenty-four point one two five credit, so the maximum number of credits they could have earned. Uh, in their first three complete years in, in high school. Um, then there were seventeen who would earn between twenty-three and twenty-four and so on, so. That shows that, uh, there are students currently coming into this school year, um, who would be, um. Maybe essentially short of the, certainly of the twenty-eight, um, and, and again, this year. Uh, they are taking, it's a three-by-five, but we're also making up a little bit because we're, um, offering. Uh, a higher amount of credit for their advising and their socio-emotional learning coursework that they do with the. The Zello and the advising work for their career preparation, and so, um. We will end up with some students who are, um, are, are short, we do have plans, uh, for, as we always do. For students, uh, uh, with alternative education plan needs, um. But it's gonna be very challenging for a number of students, uh. Who would need to, to pass nearly all, all of their classes in order to graduate on time with their class, uh, at the end of the school year.
So you wanna scroll back up to the recommendations, there you go. That's what we're asking to make that recommendation, cause of course, families are asking, well, we're not able to get as many credits as we were before, and so families are starting to ask those questions. And so, um, as kids are wrapping up first trimester, scheduling classes for second trimester, um, we wanted to. Which prompted the whole, oh yeah, we didn't fix this problem yet, we moved to the three-by-five and we didn't make this adjustment yet, so, questions, comments?
So this would be not just for this year, but for every year going forward.
Correct, because we changed from the four-by-four to the three-by-five permanently, yep.
On the surface of it, it looks like you're, you're, they're, they're not doing as much. When you say fifteen, we're like from fifteen classes to, or sixteen to fifteen, and then decreasing the credit. Um, do you feel that's because of the time spent in the work, workplace or the online?
No, I think that our schedule before dictated that they had to take eight classes at a time, when there are very, very, very few schools around us. That high school students were responsible for eight classes at one given time, very few, and so I think. Be, and, and Chris and Tom, please chime in if I'm incorrect, but the average in our region, when we've done those studies, is twenty-six cred- credits for graduation. We had a very, some people would say, I mean, there, there was all that discussion when they had to take eight classes, like, what are we preparing them for? What college kid goes and takes eight classes, like, that's not really, that doesn't happen very often, so why are we giving them so much content at one time? Particularly when you look at our poverty rate, um, the organization skill, all of that stuff. That fewer classes, deeper dive would be better than a lot more classes and then not be able to get to that content. If you remember this summer, when we looked at the difference between the four-by-four and the three-by-five, there was actually more instructional time for each content area. Um, by moving to trimesters of five classes, so it is a deeper dive into those classes that they have. As opposed to, um, a shorter brushing over more classes, so yes, it is. Definitely less than what we had before, but what we had before was unparalleled in our region, we did not find anyone else who had the eight classes. Without study halls or something like that built in, which we did not have study halls built in, so it is less, but it is, this is. Far more in line with our, uh, with the state, uh, uh, graduation.
So we would expect to see improvement in, in our scores.
Tell me what scores specifically, no, tell me what scores.
I'm just thinking of preparation, so we should be able to prepare people better by doing this. To go to college or to pass their tests or to achieve their, their stated goals, whatever that would be.
Uh, cause deeper dive into those content areas, we wouldn't expect more mastery coming up, when you said to scores, I'm like. Graduation rate or ACT rate or AP scores or?
Think about just how they're prepared for life generally, but ACT scores for kids who are going to college too, and our, our, um. Our other scores all look so good, and so I'm concerned that if we keep diminishing, diminishing. If in fact, that's what we're doing, and that's why I'm asking that we are preparing students as well.
I guess it's whether you think, um, more is better or less and deeper dive is better, right?
Right, and so at that age, I'm not sure which is better, because they're experimenting with a lot of different things. So when I look at our, our number of, of, of classroom catalog, at all the different things that students can do, will that stay the same or will that be small?
So we've made quite a commitment to electives and the offerings, um, partially because when we have, um, and are you guys able to hear Patty when she speaks, or should I slide?
It's difficult to hear, I wasn't quite here.
So the question was, um, be, if we are, um, not having as many offerings, would we at some point find, I'm sorry. If kids are not taking as many classes at one time, at one point, would we see ourselves diminishing the number of offerings that we have? And I was about to respond, but if you guys would like to take it, you go right ahead.
Well, I think you, that certainly mathematically makes sense that there, there, we may have fewer, uh, fewer number of elective courses that are offered. However, I think what, what Shelly was saying with the, 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 the more intense and the, the deeper dive or the the, the quality of instruction in the courses the students are taking is, is really what we're after and not we really found that a high school kid juggling eight classes at a time. Many of them who work part-time, who are involved in sports and other, other, um, activities is an enormous load for them. And the quality that you get from, uh, from that kind of, uh, load of work, um, is not necessarily the vast. And so, uh, that was, uh, uh, one of the large motivators and I was changing them to the three to five for the current situation because there, as all of us know, when we're experiencing, there are a lot of others uh, stressors involved in, in everyone's lives, including students right now. So looking forward, uh, I, I really think that the, the twenty-eight credit requirement was quite frankly, kind of without a line. I just pulled up, uh, information that I have from the Cooley Conference and, uh, every other school is, uh, either is between twenty-three or twenty-six credits required in the Cooley Conference. So granted, that's. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that if we were doing this as a financial savings, then I would say, yes, we'd be trying to eliminate some of those electives. But that's not our intention going into it. And so I think that, um, because kids can take fewer classes, they're going to have to make some decisions where they cannot be able to take as many widespread electives. But I would also say that by the time kids are juniors and seniors, uh, currently they have a hard time picking classes that they're still very interested in because they've already done a broader exploration. And if you remember at the middle school level, we make all kids take all of those specials as that real exploration that by the time they get to high school, kids know very clearly like, yeah, I definitely am into porn language or no, that is not my interest, or I'd love to go spend more time with Mr. Markard or nope, but I love Tech Ed. And so we do a wider exploration at the middle school that by the time kids get to junior and senior year, they're often kind of, um, these are my choices. And then we saw a lot of kids going to the virtual classes to supplement what we're already offering as well. And so to be honest, part of our hope would be that they don't have as many opportunities for those, um, other, uh, third-party virtual classes that we pay for because there would be more classes in our building that they hadn't already explored or, or worked with. So class sizes might end up being a little bit smaller in some of those groups, but to be honest, I, I, I think juniors and seniors sometimes are looking for things to fill their schedule. And so having fewer all the way through might be helpful to them as well. So again, we don't need any voting on this tonight, but we will need some action in the near future. And I'm going to ask you, would you be okay, since we are going to have to gather on December seventh for, um, the, uh, bond, uh, sale? Can this be an action item then, or would you rather wait till our regular meeting in December? It's not blazing on fire, but if you need more information, we'd sure like to know that so that we can share it and perhaps just Tom sharing that chart with you so you can see all the rest of the districts around us, uh, would be helpful.
This year, sorry, this year they're doing, they're actually doing, uh, three by four though, right?
Uh, nope, it isn't three by five this year, right? Kids have five classes.
Five classes, advising is kind of, they're getting credits for advising this year.
Yeah, a small, and they always do get, this year's advising credit is slightly larger than it usually is. But they have five classes a day right now, right? Yeah, just next year, there will be more instructional minutes available. So we took that hour off and half of an hour came from the lunch and learn. And then the other half was by squeezing each of those, um, um, academic blocks by just a tiny little bit. So next year lunch and learn is likely to come back and each of those academic blocks will grow by a couple of minutes.
And then S E L law, what is that?
Advising. Yeah. And so it's a couple, once a week? How often is S E L and advising, once a week?
Once a week.
Once a week. And that's a long.
Okay, yeah, just clarification of the, the number of minutes in the, in the course. You mentioned at the beginning too, that uh, currently we are just, I, I believe, I, I don't remember the front name, but I believe it was twenty or thirty minutes less instructional time per course this year than last year. And next year it would be about, uh, the same amount in addition to what students were getting in the four by four semester version. So instructionally, instructional minutes, they're actually getting very close to the same this year and they'll get more next year.
Even with the one hour early release, so.
Yeah, this year even with the one hour early release, they're, they're just, uh, like I say, about, I, I believe it's about thirty minutes less than.
Over the course of the whole trimester.
Over the course of the trimester, right. So a an, an English nine first semester course last year compared to an English nine first trimester course this year, this year, those kids had about thirty minutes less than last year. Total for the whole course.
But do you want to have it on December seventh?
And do you need any additional information? Are you curious about Tom's charts about regionals or?
I think we should do a quick for our students.
So you're not concerned with regionals? Okay.
But someone else might be concerned, but just me.
Go ahead, put the seven.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me add that discussion to me.
Okay, next we have monthly expenditures and those who are in your backup. And I'll show you have comments or questions on.
One thing before that I always, I said I would just give you a quick update on the standards based, and it'll be really quick. We did meet, but we're meeting virtually now. And it was a lot of wordsmithing on how to finalize our grading purpose and we talked about, um, how to separate behaviors from academics and then there was a lot to report to this thing.
And I'm sorry, Rachel, I put that down under, um, oh, actually I put it in the wrong spot. I put it by W E S B. I should have put it under conference and workshop attendance. I actually have it listed on the agenda, but I put it under W E S B accidentally. No, that's quite right. I will. I apologize. I thought Stephanie and I had had a conversation. We talked about maybe putting it down there. Maybe I was wrong.
No, that's good.
Either way, I had it in the wrong spot, but we will keep it. No, we'll put it under conference and workshop attendance moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you for the update.
Um, here you know, um, monthly expenditure questions? Is there motion to approve?
I make motions to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Just a quick question from that. I saw that they had a refund on the Galapagos or something. Are there still one like this next year or?
There's no plans right now. So I just wanted to let you know that we had our first little, I don't think we really appropriately celebrated that passing of the referendum. We could just zoom out for a moment and just really celebrate how fantastic that is, right? I just, it, I don't think it can be understated that to me, um, and maybe I'm overzealous, but after twenty years of failed referendums and then two positive ones, I feel like the approach that we took in giving the information that, that, giving the community as much information as we possibly can and just really emphasizing them being informed when they go to the polls, I think has been very successful. I also believe that it speaks to some trust that's been built between the district and our community because even if we said something to them and they didn't trust us, they would not have believed it. And in fact, when we first started working with our partners, they said, we don't think it should be zero. We think you should make it for, you know, some increase because people just won't believe that you can get something for nothing. And we kept saying, yeah, but it feels arbitrary to just put a number in there. Let's, let us, let us try to communicate it this way. And I just really think that that speaks to the, um, level of trust that our community has. And so many times in my presentations and words, I said, the board has used this strategy. The board has tried to set the community up for this opportunity. And I just feel like that is a great, uh, source of pride for all of us. And I think that, um, it doesn't, while the percentage of positive referendums was really, really strong again, um, I, in my class that I teach, uh, Madison, I have somebody from Madison, which was the largest referendum in the state of Wisconsin ever, and it passed successfully. And then that's my from Los Alamos, which they were not successful. So it wasn't a, a sweep, but over ninety percent of the referendums passed again. And so again, I just think that, um, the more that you hear people frustrated with public education, I, I, I still think that people are frustrated with public education on a national level and on a, uh, funding or on a, you know, this big scale, but yet over and over communities are saying, I believe in the great work that's happening in our community. And I think that that's really important to keep, right? It's, it's okay that we advocate for policy on this level, but we can't forget to celebrate the good support and the partnerships that we have at this level too. So I just think that that's really, really, uh, a sense of appreciation for all of the work that all of us do for the community. And so we should definitely celebrate that success. And so I didn't want to brush right past that.
Can you share about, um, the school perceptions percentage? I think that's remarkable.
So Bill Foster in our school perception survey, we pay for that service. Ken Lyman pointed it out to me as soon as he came in the next morning and the referendum has passed. He goes sixty-three percent, right? And I said, absolutely sixty-three percent. He went and looked at the big board. He goes, look it, he said sixty-three percent. I'm like, he did? And then he was, what was it last time? I said, we passed the last referendum by sixty-two percent. We look back at our survey, sixty-two percent. Isn't that crazy? And what I found so interesting this time, when I looked at the percentage of pass rate, there were about three thousand more voters this time than last time. And yet those percentages were still exactly like he had predicted them. So that is just, he's got a science there. That's, uh, cause he says, once you get, um, what did he say? Like twelve hundred responses for a community our size, it's statistically significant. And so it didn't matter that we, from that twelve hundred survey to get a total of, you know, whatever, I can't remember if it was how many thousand votes. There's three thousand more than last time. Time to say like six thousand votes. Those results were statistically significant and were predictive of the end result. So that's good math stuff, right? Good, good stats. So. Yes. And so next steps, exciting stuff. Um, we are engaging with them, uh, first on, um, probably later, not probably, later this month, we will begin to have those first level conversations. Right now it's going to be some big picture planning and timing. What we are thinking zoom out is that summer of twenty-one is likely to be the high school boiler and hopefully the middle school H V A C system. And then the renovation or the additions primary to the high school and forestry would start in the fall of twenty-one and would be throughout that school year. So that by August twenty-two, all projects would be wrapped up. That's like the big picture. If you think about the projects, we're going to have to do a lot of temporary situations, um, whether it be the high school, um, when we're adding on there that West Gym Parking is not going to be feasible. So there'll have to be some short-term solutions for that. And then at Forest Street, we're going to have to really be creative because their main entry area down below where the buses, I mean, there are so many areas that are going to need to be a temporary office. There's going to need to be the whole traffic flow of that building is going to need to be reconfigured. And so, um, right now they're engaging with engineers because that H V A, the boiler at the high school is a lot more engineer work than it is this one or this one, or this color or this color. It's a lot more engineer work. And so they are starting that project right now. And they're also trying to get the survey of both of the other properties done before the snow falls. And so that is their most imminent. Get those pieces out of the way first. And then, um, early December or early January, we will get to the bringing teams of teachers in to start the designing of what those processes or what their areas would potentially look like. And so um, that design is just a little bit down the road. But the engineering and surveying, we are really trying to get done soon because we, you know, at first they were talking about, well, that high school boiler could go out another year. And Jill's like, we got it started this year? I don't know that we want to rely on it for a long more years. So, um, they said, got it. Either that or buying sweaters, right? And mittens for the high school. So, so we're hopeful that that part of the project can, uh, happen. Just wanted to give you that big picture outline. I did want to ask, what level of involvement is the board interested in having? Last time, um, they prepared a monthly reports for you that were kind of a progress update. Um, and Bray Architect said that they would start doing that during this design phase before we got to the actual building. And then Myron was certainly do it when we got to the building part. I was unsure if that worked for you last time or if the board wanted a representative when we have those um, design meetings with the staff. Is that a level that you feel like you want to get involved in or is appropriate to get involved in? What are? I want you to tell me what level of involvement you feel is most appropriate.
I think the monthly was good. The monthly.
Okay.
It'll be interesting to see if design of classroom space and educational space changes because of what we've done through the comments. If the spaces are recommended to be larger and more open and just be a shift.
Well, you think about the spaces for Billy Music and, you know, the band in choir is certainly those, oh my gosh, was Paula so excited about the opportunity. Okay. So the monthly updates are good for you. And if at some point, certainly once we, you know, um, you'll be well, well versed before there's any groundbreaking or anything like that. And we'll certainly duly appropriately do some kind of a celebration or something like that. But for now, we'll keep you, um, uh, informed through the monthly meetings. That was all that I have on that for today.
Any questions on sort of the update? Okay, we'll move on to the second reading of our group of policies. Were there any that you had changes or questions about? Okay, then I'm going to move that we just approve these as a dissent agenda item as, as a group. Motion to approve all of the policy changes. All in favor, say aye.
And I apologize in the fact that there was one more item under Stephanie's, um, curriculum and instruction and the involvement piece. I did put it under there. Oh, sorry. Sorry, I, in the packet, I put it under yours and then on the agenda I put it later. So I'm just saying.
The meeting minutes that were enclosed? Any questions on those or change? Motion to approve the minute we need as designed.
All second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
All right. I have been all facility, all COVID, all the time. And so I am um, very happy to hand it out to the building. So let's start with Melanie first and share a little tidbits about, uh, Forest Street.
Hi, I am so excited that the referendum passed. So I have to join in the celebration there because our building is over the moon to be able to create some additional spaces for our students. And something else that I wanted to share is we recently had our parent teacher conference tonight and, um, it was definitely a new format for us. We opened up our doors and allowed families to choose between attending virtually or attending face-to-face. And we had a great number of families that actually chose to attend virtually. And it went off pretty much without a hitch. Um, we got really good feedback from families that they appreciated the timeliness of, of that model of conferences that they flowed really smoothly. There wasn't waiting around for previous conferences to wrap up. That, um, they were easy to navigate too, for the most part. I think we had a couple, just one or two glitches out of all of our conferences. So, um, parents thought that it was wonderful. The feedback that we received, um, one of the things, one of the most interesting things that I wanted to share that some teachers had shared with me is that you have to look for the bright spots in, in this time of, of COVID. And one of the things that um, a parent had shared with a teacher is that she noticed that her child had got some fine motor deficits that, um, she wouldn't have otherwise noticed. And so I think um, some of these wonderful collaborations that come out between teachers and parents is something to highlight that, um, something that the parents get to see is how their children learn and how their children, um, you know, grow during the school year. So, um, it's nice to see that. I mean, we don't like to see deficits and students, but it's nice for parents to be able to notice them too and help work on them. And the other thing that I want to talk about really quickly is our continued self-efficacy work. We are, um, we were doing monthly slide decks, which is basically a PowerPoint presentation, which each of our staff members now have their own slide. And they contribute, um, information on their goal for the year and how they're progressing on that. And we are in our infant stages of teachers trying out different strategies. And we've got just a phenomenal staff that has really, um, taken the lead on this and are excited to try some wonderful things. Um, getting students to have some ownership in their learning. Um, even our interventionist, Kirsten Meyer, had, um, a chart that the kids fill in at the end of each intermission session. And the letters that they've mastered and the sounds that they've mastered. So, um, self-efficacy even now for our little kids is definitely something very much possible and, um, exciting to see if the kids take ownership in their learning. So I just wanted to give you a little update on we're still. So I just wanted to give you a little update on, we're still pushing forward with some great fail work.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Melanie. How about Red Creek?
Good evening. Um I also want to talk about how awesome our parent teacher conferences went for us. Uh we encourage families to do the virtual or phone option. I think we had maybe one or two that requested to come in face-to-face. And we certainly um followed through with that and made that happen for those. But um it was really wonderful. The, I'm still collecting the data as we, um if the parents weren't able to make those meetings, the teachers attempt three more times to reach out to them um before, you know, we kind of call it. We tried our best. Um but the numbers are really high, um and that's exciting. I think for lots of our families, so often we see them trying to come in. It's around supper time, they have all their little ones because there's nobody to watch their kids. And then, you know, they're like, yeah, we have to stop at McDonald's on the way home. And it's just so much work for those families. Uh we had a whole different feel from them by it being able to join from home. Um uh the other thing um that teachers did was they started presenting slide shows um about each of their students. So they were sharing their data in that format. That way they could share their screen and go through um their reading and math scores. And the parents really appreciated that format too. If they did the conference over the phone, they were emailing those presentations to the families. So that was another big plus. The other thing that we found is there are so many older people that um connect with our students, our interventionists, our special education teachers, teaching language. They spend so much, they're even running from one side of the building to the other. And so with the digital format, it was great for them to be able to pop into more of the conferences. So there were lots of pluses. I think the teachers felt like even in the future, this might be a great option to offer our families because they are so busy and they do have all the little ones to worry about at night too. So um lots of big success for that, with that. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, of course, um everyone is working hard on getting ready for our virtual. And uh half the opt for our virtual teaching team, we have six virtual teachers at Red Creek. And they have, from day one, been prepping the classroom teachers for this um exact um opportunity that we're facing on the thirtieth. And so um we've been busy purchasing more tech equipment, like uh webcams to help the teachers. Um but we've also gotten lots of feedback now, well, this is our bonus that we're going to celebrate, uh with some of the teachers in classrooms having to switch to virtual and some of our um students having to quarantine and switch temporarily to virtual. The virtual teachers have been super impressed at how prepared those students are when they join in those virtual classrooms. They comment that they are just in there, ready to go, they know how to get to the meets. And so that's made that process um easier as those numbers are climbing. Um the other thing is we've gotten great feedback from the parents as well that um they have been impressed that when they do have to go temporarily virtual because of a quarantine, their students are showing lots of confidence in knowing where to go and how to find the move to the classroom. Because our face-to-face teachers have been working on that all along. Um so I am very hopeful that on the thirtieth, that all our face-to-face and virtual students will all find lots of success when we go a hundred percent virtual, so. Any questions?
Thank you very much. How about Mr. Hartman?
All right, good evening, everybody. Um as many of you know, our middle school went virtual starting last Friday, November thirteenth. Um our teachers worked very hard this year to prepare our students for virtual learning, starting the first day of school. Um they worked many different learning platforms, including Google Meet, Zoom, and Boardless Classroom. Um and figured what will work best for our students and staff and made a decision to all, for all of us, use the same platform. Um we taught our students to include in Canvas and held virtual practice days to work through problems that students might have. Um our students thus far have adjusted very, very well from face-to-face to virtual learning. Um they're joining our classrooms and consistently engaging. Um it's been a pleasure for the teachers to work with them. Um the students are, were excited to be in school, but they're also excited to be online as well. Um I believe um our success with virtual learning has a lot to do with the hard work that our teachers did to prepare our students. And I also believe it has a lot to do with the the parent support we have at home. Um as we'd rather be face-to-face, we are making the best of virtual learning and our footwork is going very good.
Great, thank you, thank you. How about high school? Mr. Salheim has a presentation.
Yes, good morning. So Jill, could you put on first one, I show, please?
Seven point two.
A couple of things that we'd like to celebrate as she is putting that slideshow up. Uh first of all, Ms. Handy, our art teacher is also very excited about the uh referendum passing and creating a new art space. Um also I'd like to talk about our Wednesday intervention. Uh that uh last week, I started making rounds to count how many students came in to take advantage of that time physically being here in the building. And uh we had over, over forty students who at some point came in during the day to physically do things in the school, like work in the shop, uh with the teachers, uh work on projects and 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 that kind of thing. Uh so it was quite impressive how students are um taking advantage of that. And also, you know, how many are being able to access intervention through a lot of discussion as well. So that time is uh really an effort, or at least the all student, our teachers have been able to work with students.
Mr. Salheim, I'm so sorry, it is not in there. And I know you sent it to both Marty and I, and I'm not sure how that, wow, I had the, just, um.
Should I share it with Jill right now?
If you could, that'd be great.
I just have the first draft and then see a final.
Okay. That would be great, Mr. Salheim. So because it was Google Docs, as soon as he updated, he assumed we had to link it, I guess. And so he didn't reshare it. I think you wouldn't have done that.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Nope, that's okay. She didn't go back to it, she was waiting for you to reshare. So it didn't get put in there, but if you share it with Jill, we'll be all good.
All right, I'll share this.
Marty was waiting for the big final stamp on it.
Always.
That's right. It was late Friday before everything else happened, so. It's good information though, folks, so it's worth the wait, right? Worth the wait. Okay, you're up, Mr. Salheim.
All right, so this um another thing that we're actually going to celebrate tonight is our discipline data at the high school. And uh Dr. Severson and I were talking about this during the rounding um conference. And she asked, I assure you, these results. So it is kind of nice that you uh actually don't see the, the, the next slide. So I will chance for surprise here. Uh the red and blue bars here are are two months' worth of discipline data from two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year and the two thousand nineteen, twenty. So that blue one, you can see of the large peak that really uh started raising the flags, warring uh last year as far as the uh the number of major write-ups uh in our building. And that was at uh three hundred and forty-two. And that means uh three hundred and forty-two times in the month of October, either classes interrupted by a student needing to be removed from the classroom or a student having to be redirected or something that uh administration had to provide support with. Uh and, you know, help support with the student. Okay, now, uh we've been talking about this in the high school for the last uh two months. And we're going to celebrate, but we always get the yeah-buts. Yeah, I realize that a third of the students are uh doing virtual. So I'd like you to take a look at those blue bars and just mentally take a guess of where you think the numbers would be if we had thirty percent less students. I'll just give you a second.
The blue is three forty-seven, three forty-two. Three forty-two, okay. The suspense is killing us, Chris.
All right, next page. Go ahead, Jill.
She did. We're all in awe.
All right, yeah. Uh my video's a little.
Yep, yep.
Um so anyway, uh this year in September, we had seventy-four major write-ups, which is lower than the last two years. Um even if you take off a third off of that blue uh major bar, we're still significantly less than that. And then if you look at the trend for October, uh you see a very, very sharp uh decrease in number of major write-ups. And yes, that's, some of that's due to uh less students in the building. But another thing to celebrate is this is the first time in the month of October we've had less than what we had in September. So we are changing patterns in what what's happening in the building. And go ahead to page three. So points to celebrate, again, the reduced number of majors. Uh but like for me, in my room, uh working with students, the students know what it feels like, uh what a classroom should feel like when there's less majors. So we're changing the culture, uh the, the conversations that we're having with the students are different. And uh one that I don't have on there is the teachers are feeling empowered. So even today, um after a full day of admin meeting, I come back to support the teacher. And she basically told me, uh please slow down, let me handle it first. And so they want to uh more often just handle it and I'll work with the students. Next one. On the pathway, uh how we got here. Uh our building has worked really hard on trauma-sensitive language. And so just how we talk to students and how we respond uh can either elevate or decrease the situation. So we've bought into that. Another thing is kids do what they can. That's a philosophy statement by Dr. Green, who's a psychologist out east. Uh been focusing on student behavior for about a decade. And that really gets them the reasoning why kids act up and do what they do in class and become a disruption. It's really when they can't deal with all the sensory input and they don't know how to adapt until they act out. So uh what we've focused on as a building is how do we identify that point? What can't they do? Um our flex in-service this year for the high school building is an online Canvas course that the teachers uh learn about this philosophy and resources from Dr. Green. Uh then we also facilitate restorative conversations. So if the student gets removed from a classroom, uh they're not just assigned a consequence, uh but they are going to meet with the teacher. And uh myself or Mr. Marine will facilitate a restorative conversation that follows a certain format uh that empowers the student to uh problem-solve the the solution. And then the, the next part is to get it to be a collaborative, proactive solution. So rather than reacting to when we think it's in trouble, what can we do to prevent it? So we can even reduce those numbers more uh in future years. And then, of course, lastly, uh we did invest heavily into SEO in that tier one or that first layer of working with all students to again prevent trouble from, trouble from occurring to. Uh last slide. Uh so lastly, uh our school goal is to increase student empowerment. And so that's a lot of what we've been doing with our, our discipline approach here is how do we teach the students the skills to address the behavior? So that restorative con- uh conversation is about that, those corrective solutions. Um we're also working with a tier-two team now, uh that we just put together this year. And that one not only addresses those, those next level kids, that ten percent that are struggling and they're repetitive uh in their behavior uh patterns. Uh we're really working on addressing how can we teach them the skills more directly, more intensively uh to adapt. Uh lastly, um the students are starting to ask for help. Uh they say, I don't know what to do, what can, what can we do to figure this out? So uh again, that's changing the conversation into not, why did I get in trouble? But what can I do to get help to to move forward? Any questions for me?
Thank you for the good news, yeah, good data.
I went into my rounding with Chris and he had his charts already and was showing me, not in this format, but just the charts. And he started with some of his yeah-buts. I'm like, no, 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 we're not explaining this away, we are celebrating this, right? The changing of the trend is a really big deal. I don't care how many students you have and you're changing the trend, and that is exceptional. And changing teacher behavior when it comes to discipline, as opposed to giving the problem to someone else to solve, owning that problem for both students and staff member, and then repairing that relationship together, that is beautiful. So that course that they took over the summer for their flex-in service is, of course, that Chris helped to create. He put all the content together and so the teachers go through that. And then he deems them certified to be able to have the restorative conversations and such. So it's a, a slow-moving train, as we know, but that is pretty exciting, exciting stuff. So, great, thank you so much. Well, let's hear from Dr. Kielbasa.
Hey, we are super excited that the referendum passed, but in a different way because with the high school uh boiler being fixed, that means that those parts can go to Get Heart. That's what means that my old boiler can jumpstart. Here's a quick example, all of the different programs, whether it's the EBD program, the DEP program, Phoenix and the Nexus, um are all working on finishing this semester um academically. We do the SCL curriculum every single day in our building. And so each program has that SCL curriculum every day for at least forty minutes. So we've been working really, really hard on that. Uh we are starting to work on what it's going to look like virtually for our students coming up um on November thirtieth. The Nexus boys have been building picnic tables. If you've driven by Get Heart, you're going to see two hunkin' big picnic tables in front of Get Heart. Um and along with that, um the guys are teaching, um the two bail instructors are teaching the students how to do some wood engraving and wood burning. Um and they have taken the DEP kids in, they're kind of in their fold and showing them how to build the tables and how to stain and do some of those different things. And when I talk, when I think about the last couple of weeks or the last month, um the thing that strikes me the most is how um I can be short on any given day and it doesn't matter what staff I have, they just moved whatever program I need support in. And I, I just, I have a phenomenal staff who are, I, I don't worry when I get there in the morning. Um as long as I've got somebody, so I don't worry because um I know that they're going to be there to cover. And it doesn't matter who it is. Um they are so respectfully kind to all of those students and, and really just want to work for what's best for them. We really do have phenomenal staff. So we are moving forward and excited for what that virtual learning might look like.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks, Tammy. Any questions for any of the team? All right, that's all I have then.
We'll move on to WASKSB. Um again, I'm just going to mention that convention is virtual and it looks to be really, really good. So um go on and, and check that out. I know the Donald Driver presentation is supposed to be really phenomenal with his story. He calls it homeless to hero and.
And now they mentioned Donald Driver tonight. The Chicago Bears, which is Tammy's team, is playing the Minnesota Vikings. So I should have asked one, Tammy, if she knows what the score is, because she's home, sorry. I went to the Packers and those who have been tucking a little smack lately.
It's my Vikings.
So you don't know the score.
I do, their Vikings are losing.
Oh.
Thirteen, ten.
The Bears are winning.
Sorry, I digress.
So for talking about the annual convention, can I ask who would be interested in me registering them for the virtual? Tammy?
Do you, do you, would we, would we do it from home then or would we get together here or how was this?
Yeah, I guess anything would be a choice. I, even if we came together though, we would all go to different sessions because it's not going to be all one large group, you know? So it almost feels like being together, we all have earbuds on and we might as well be open. So it almost feels like being together, we all have earbuds on and we might as well be open.
Register, I, I understand you can have access to anything even at a later date.
Yeah, which I thought was really exciting. Yeah, you get the recordings to use moving forward, so. That means if someone finds a really good one, we could say, hey, how about we all watch this one, right? As opposed to you should have been there. You missed that one. So I will definitely plan on going.
And I, I will too, but WASB will pay for mine, but I still have to register.
Do you want me to register?
I think we did that last year and they just.
Mr. Chambers wanted to remind us that Black River Falls was, hey, I think it's, yeah. Um, that, uh, a high school student has been asked to be a representative on one of the down at WASB, um, opening student panel. They've asked three students and they're really focusing on, um, diversity from.
Well, it's Milwaukee and Sun Prairie and Black River Falls. So they're all different sized school and just, um, how the students have navigated this, the start of the year and to share. So, um, they'll be, they'll be meeting with those students to kind of go over for questions.
This was really involved in Julie Tiedon's student reporting lab and that Julie kind of launched her into this, um, activist, uh, role, if you will, and she's, yeah, she's pretty.
I was amazing. I can just watch the show.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have anything more to add about standard-based education?
Well, let's see. Um, we talked about different ways to present to different groups, whether you use a flow chart or a list. And then I had to leave about forty-five minutes early, so.
Yeah, so then we started talking a little bit about one of the pieces of standard-based education. Um, when reporting the grading side of things, um, that you would separate all the behavior or talk that separately and you have a different system of support and accountability, um, in, and keep that separate from the reporting and support and accountability on the academic skill and performance side. And so we started talking about what are the steps that we need to go through and develop that behavioral side. Um, because we didn't want to have one without the other. And so just some initial conversation of direction from the advisory committee and something that we will keep talking more over the next several weeks.
Any other conference workshop attendants to report on? And then you received this school board connection opportunities, um, item in your packet.
So can you give that a little explanation since they, the roles from your committee?
So this, um, came from the Student Success Committee. We talked about our board development as kind of directive from the board to articulate, um, some opportunities. And so brought the draft from the admin team back to the Student Success Committee this past month. And feedback from the, um, Success Committee was to kind of organize it like this in some ongoing opportunities and then some chronological, um, opportunities and to add this as an agenda item every month so that, um, people could say, next month, I would like to go to these things. And we can kind of note that. And then the following month could hear back from those people and say, how did that go? What would you like to share with the board? And then, um, who would like to go to the next round of events? And so, um, Troy, I know that you were there as well as Amy. Um, I don't know if you have anything to contribute in addition to that?
That was nice to see all this information. That's all we said.
It's a lot of opportunity.
Yes.
And so you agreed, as a whole group, you want this on the monthly agenda each month to discuss?
That would be the proposal from the Student Success Committee back to the board.
Asking the rest of the board.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. I heard you. So would it be, would the whole thing be there or just the one that's pertinent for that season?
We could certainly highlight a month at a time and, and some of the ongoing that happened. We sure could.
And if more things are added, there's something.
Sure. Some of the ones that are up on top are like monthly, student of the month and, you know, so we thought if we just linked this each time and you could look through, but whatever works for you all.
And so does it make sense under conference and workshop? Is it part of community engagement? Is it our people because you're going out? Is it, you're not here and I just park it somewhere?
It's a lot of them.
It's pretty broad. There's different things for everything there. So it's not this one category.
So I'll leave it under conference and workshop attendance, some of that, right?
Yeah. And then Troy's question, that it was, if more than three of us are going here and there, is that a problem?
So, um, um, if there's not to be any board business done, um, it technically should still be posted. However, um, if, so if there is a likelihood of there being a quorum, it should be posted as a public meeting. If there is no business to be done, you are okay. Uh, you know, it would be nice to have a conversation. And if there are things that we know everyone's going to, but like a Veterans Day program, you could all go to that wouldn't have to be publicly noticed because there will be zero board business. You're not presenting. You're not any of those things. So, um, there'd be very few of these items that would carry board business, to be honest.
You don't have to be a child.
Right. That's it. Because now you're six feet apart anyway. But yeah, that's my thing. I mean, there's no, the likelihood of board business happening is pretty small.
And outside the boardroom, there should be no board business going on anywhere or no conversation outside, so. But, but I do see some things posted where some people are going. And we always post if we're going to the convention, just for, so people know we're going down there. We're not going to be making decisions or anything.
Thank you, Sam.
And now we're at future agenda items, um, that credit it going on, on our special meeting on December seventh. We have policy committee prior to that as well.
So probably, so right now that evening is policy committee at four and special board meeting at five-thirty is what is the current, um, timing of that. Because I thought you said five-thirty was the closest you could make.
I could do that.
Okay. But not all the time, right?
Right.
I just thought if we could piggyback from policy, but we already had some people here, it would be nice. And I try not to make policy last two hours, so.
I understand, yeah.
Are there any other agenda items for either that meeting or for our December report meeting that you would like?
Okay. Yes. Rachel makes the motion.
I'll second it.
All the favors they hide. I have a couple.
Thanks, everyone, for bringing us on. It's time.